...then whatever $50 they got paid here, and then they pay also the store of Ritzville.
Yes, they do.
The standholders, exactly. I guess maybe what you don't know is that many of these standholders make hundreds and hundreds of dollars.
You have a lot of them, or when they awake on Sunday.
So, you know, I guess what we'll do is we'll look at that.
Yeah, I would suggest, next year, you know, when the store of Ritzville gets ready to have their earnings day, I'm sure that the mayor will sit down with them and go over everything and try to find a solution, okay?
We have a [inaudible 00:01:45].
We're not out to take money from a nonprofit organizations in Ritzville, but we are trying to use better control and get some income, to be honest with you, for the borough, for permits that we have to issue, so we'll take a look at that, okay? Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, George Stanley. George? Oh, there you are, I'm sorry.
Uh, most of you people might know, well, some of you might know that the one time I did, I stole payment. So, I was very, very disappointed when I saw the job on North Third Street from home to Locust. What's gonna happen next one is, as water melts off the roofs on the west side of that street, it's down, out into the street, and it'll melt during the night too, because of the heat in the buildings, it's gonna run across that street simply because the engineer, whoever he was, he missed a fine amount of part of the road building. No crown. There's no crown, there's no place where we're going to go out the gutter at Home Street to catch it, because there's no water going that way, and water is gonna go across the street. As it melts, you're gonna create ice, so that had to be disappointing. By the way, who was our engineer, who was the engineer on that project?
We have our engineer. C.S. Davis was our engineer.
Yeah, well, he missed a [inaudible 00:02:33] there.
Well, I mean, who, I mean, we'll see what happens.
You'll see next winter, you'll see the ice there.
There are plenty of drains there to come in and work, store and work.
Uh, in, like, just, you're [inaudible 00:03:17].
Yeah.
We had to try to cross sections of the street before we touched the street. Ninety percent of the street drained to the east side. There was not all sections of the gutter, so.
We have a crown in it though.
I understand.
Water comes to the side, and water does not run way across the street from the side.
I understand, crown.
We had a crown, that's thank you.
I say one thing, shame on the guy that was the engineer there.
All right, well, that's fine.
Now, the other thing is, when I go back Third Street, I got over the ice there, I cross Locust Street, and on the west side of Locust, where Third crosses it, near the pedestrian sidewalk, there's a gutter across there, there's loop, loop every time I go across it. Sure, absolutely no useful purpose. Then I go back another block further back, on Third, same thing, on the north side of Walnut Street, near the pedestrian crosswalk, at Third Walnut, on the north side, running parallel with the pedestrian crosswalk there, we got another ditch. That ditch, there again, construction, about a week or two after that street was paved, I mean, from it, from Third to Fourth, about a week after that, there was a rain, week or two, boop, down she goes, now we got another, boop, boop. Try it sometime. I would like to see those two problems corrected. The one at, the one at Locust.
It was Third and Locust, and Third and the alley between Locust and Walnut.
What?
Not the alley, no. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go over again.
Third and Locust, on the north side of the intersection, running parallel with Locust.
Okay.
Third and Walnut, on the north side intersection, running parallel with Walnut.
It's, uh, it's, uh, we'll, we'll take a look at our engineers.
Here's what you can come about. Another thing is, Mr. Mayor and his assistant, I assume, were back my way taking pictures of my truck, and said, "What's your problem?" Well, truck can't be here, doesn't have current registration on it, or something to have an effect, probably. Uh, and I told him, "Hey, I want this property way back 1964, for the sole purpose to have a storage here." Building equipment, rolling, drainers, neighbors, loaders, trucks, and that's, that's what the thing was for. There are two trucks there, which are not registered currently. But, they're locked, they create no problem, kids can't play in them, because they're locked. I use them for storage, same as you would use a garage. Only my garage has wheels on it. But, but, the standards and ordinance against it, okay? I says, "Well, I would like you to see both persons to use car lots and take pictures of those vehicles later." Back end them, they have no current registration on them. Oh, they got a license, but some time ago, with Jean Herschel off, he was back my way and doing the ordinance, I came to council meeting then about it, and at that time I did check the ordinance, a copy of it, and there's nothing in there that says about used car dealers having a license or anything else. There's no exception at all for used car dealers, nor for me. So, and I did it at the time, I says, "Well, I, where usually when you create such an ordinance, you have a grandfather clause in there, but there is none."
Not an ordinance, George.
Not an ordinance.
No. Go ahead, what's, what's your point?
My point is, I wanna keep those trucks there, I don't want, I don't want them to get rid of them, and not have anybody else pulling away.
Have you talked to the mayor about this?
Yep, did, he was there. He was there with his picture taker, but he said, "Well, I haven't heard that with this." So, listen.
All right. Well, that's a possibility, but I would suggest, you know, if you have, if you have a concern, the best thing would have been to, to sit down with the mayor and go over your concerns, if you're not satisfied with his result, you do what you're doing right now.
But, if you recall, back then, the previous occasion.
I understand that.
Some of the council people here said, well, I told, I can't remember the individuals, but some of them said that they told certain people that that part they're gonna restore in their backyard, you know, but they told certain people, "Well, just put a cam, so that'll be okay." But, that's not what the ordinance said. It said they got the inside of the garage, or something to have an effect, or changing parts, I can't remember which.
Let me just, I think since you've been here, George, we have enacted another ordinance, it's called a motor vehicle nuisance ordinance, okay? Now, what I'm gonna suggest you do is you get a copy of that tomorrow. There are 23 or 21 items on there that are violations of this ordinance that pertain to motor vehicles. So, what I would suggest you do is come in and get a copy of that, if any of your vehicles fail any one of those 21 or 23 parts of the ordinance, then you're gonna have to either repair it or do something. Other than that, I would suggest you sit down and talk to the mayor, talk to the health and safety committee, and, you know, see if you can work out something, if these things are actually being used for storage, they're not a detriment to the community, they're not hazardous to any children playing around them, that's what I would suggest you do. But, I'm sure that the ordinance was put in after you were here, because that was, what, at least three years ago you were here, weren't you, say?
Probably.
Yeah. So, if you'd like to do that, then I can just give you, it's, uh, it's, uh, section 302 of our motor vehicle ordinance stuff, okay?
All those council people here, do you know, if I take the cargo box off of those trucks, sit it down, get rid of chassis and the cab, actually, is that a problem? I mean, it would be about the same as a.
I'm saying, then you're talking about a story's been rather than a, than a vehicle that has wheels on it. I would suggest that before you go to that expense, that you would meet back there with the mayor and go over what you would like to do to satisfy him and to satisfy you. That's all we're trying to do. George, in, in defense of the new council and the mayor, all we're trying to do is clean the town up, and I'm sure you can say, "Well, if you're gonna pick on me, here's so and so." Now, that's the information we need. We need for the people in the town to tell us of other areas, and I have a list here of almost 40 letters that have been sent out so far this year to residents in town for ordinance violations. So, we are working on things, we're trying to clean the town up, you know, and maybe what you have back there is part of cleaning the town up, but I was suggesting two things. Pick up a copy of the ordinance, and then sit down with the mayor and discuss it, and see if you can come to some kind of agreement.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, John Lobbieto.
Thanks for letting me today, which I didn't have to. Uh, I was building a storage shed, slash, you know, shed for my tools on my property. I had a visit from the mayor and Mrs. Judd telling me that they have received several complaints from neighbors about this shed going up, and I'm kinda curious as to maybe who made the complaints, to know where their property was to my property. I had spoken to all the neighbors that were within, you know, distance of the property line, or way around the property. Everybody had, you know, confirmed there was no problem with, you know, what I was doing. There was an existing shed there to begin with, so when I put this one in, I basically moved the corner back a foot and a half, and the other corner maybe three inches. Other than that, it's the same base that was there originally. I mean, you know, that's all I did. Now, the shed was going to be a two-story shed, because I needed to use it also for storage, okay, for storage shed over Columbia. I mean, I hate to go on with this, but I've been out of work for two years, back injury, neck injury, at the company I worked for, 17 months later I missed work, and they fired me because I overslept because of my pain pills, so I've got a suit against the company, and I've gotta keep going through that. In the meantime, there's been no income, so I have to cut wherever I can. Storage shed, needed a place for the things that were in there, didn't need a storage shed over there. So, when they came and talked to me about this, I said that I'm gonna make the storage shed one more, and then just finish it off with a little bit of a law, so that way I can put boxes up there. Shed itself will hold, you know, said boxes, that's not a problem. I worked in maintenance for seven years for Forest Steel, maintenance for years, I've been interior designer for different people, so I'm quite capable of building and designing a shed of this nature. When they stopped me, they stopped me midway. Actually, they allowed the board to be done, the walls to be done, you know, face that, no roof. So, while I've been waiting a week and a half, two weeks to come in here, the materials that I had purchased for the entire shed to be built, sitting there getting stopped in the wet. So, I mean, I'd like a decision as soon as possible. I brought a diagram of my property.
Well, let me ask you a question.
And I brought.
Did you pick up a building permit?
No, I didn't know I needed one, so I was just getting rid of it.
Well, I was just gonna say, that's your first mistake. I mean, that's not our fault, I mean, okay?
I talked to my other neighbors, everybody's on this assumption that you could build on top of there, any concrete.
Well, I think, well, I understand that, but rather than talk, well, rather than talk to your neighbors, you should've came and talked to the borough secretary.
That's true.
The neighbors don't know what our requirements are for building for.
Or have you changed them?
Now, not necessarily have we changed them, but we adopted the Uniform Construction Code last year, which even makes it even worse for somebody trying to build something without a permit.
Okay. Like I said, it's taking space on an existing shed.
Well, that's beside the point, and I'm not gonna, I'm not just gonna stand here or sit here and argue with you, but I'm just telling you, the first step is to get a building permit, and second step, if it has to comply with the Uniform Construction Code, then you've gotta submit drawings, you've gotta get permits from the Uniform Construction Code, and, you know, township.
I need permits to build a one-story shed.
You sure do, yeah, and I'm gonna turn this over to me or you, if you're my friend. I mean, you know, that's, that's just the law.
Well, I know.
We're not satisfied with it either.
And a lot of people like to fall back on that. It's the law, so it's spitting gum out, it was jaywalking for you, constantly all the time?
Well, no.
You know, this is on my property, my neighbors, and I'm bothered by this, and the council here, who doesn't live by me, is bothered by it, or the three people that called in, do they live in proximity to my property?
That's beside the point.
It's not beside the point.
It is, council is bothered because you didn't pick up a building permit.
I didn't know I needed one.
Well, then you should.
When you told me about it, I offered to pay for a permit, I offered to do what I have right here. Instead, I was made to wait until your meeting came up. I called another gentleman, I can't remember his name offhand, he told me I had to come to the meeting, like I said, in between, I didn't have time. You know, that's kind of therapeutic for me, to be doing what I'm doing, and it took a long time to get that dug out, and get the side walk. There's more than enough time to.
Right, let's, let's forget about what happened in the past, this is what you have to do, you have to come in here, and you have to have the drawing, and you gotta submit that for a building permit, then you've got, then you have to go, well, I don't want it, but then you have to.
I don't need to come here, I feel like somewhere else is what you're telling me.
No, I'm saying, you should've came to the borough office to begin with, way back when, before you started digging.
Right.
And they'd have told you that you needed a building permit.
But, I really didn't dig this.
Well, I'm, okay, so, sorry.
So, it'd be exactly the same.
I'm just telling you, this is what you need, and, I'm sorry.
We might wanna [inaudible 00:08:39].
Well, yeah, I don't mean to leave any.
You might need some variances.
Well, that's true, but I mean, that would all come from the office, if you need a, I don't know if you need any variances or not. Were you there in a building setback lines?
You mean the 10 feet? No, no, then nobody else is around my block, or down the street.
I understand that.
And they've been, they've been built recently, so if you want, you know, unless you just changed your law a year ago, there's three other ones that have been built.
The, the rules have been changed within the last year and a half.
Is, is your building closer than 10 foot to the property line?
Of course it is, it's the same spot as my other, as my other building was.
Well, how close to the property, how many property lines are we talking about?
Two.
Two, and what are the distances from your building to the two different property lines?
Probably only six inches. That's exactly where it was prior to building.
Okay, we have a 10-foot building setback line.
I understand that.
We do grant exceptions to that.
Right, that's what I'm looking for.
But, we typically do not grant exceptions any closer than three feet to the property line.
So, I would've been better off just leaving my shed that was there where it was, and then I wouldn't be going through this.
Possible.
You know what, you wouldn't have come and brought me in here, if it was, if it was the same spot, and said, "Hey, you gotta move it now, let's figure it out."
While, while you're here, though, it would be the appropriate time, if you're looking for a building permit, to ask for us, and you had, it sounds like you had the neighbor's permission to do this, to grant you a variance of, from the 10-foot setback line to 3-foot.
3-foot is going to cover.
That's all we need.
You know what I mean? Because, I mean, half the building comes down, and that's not where the other building was anyway, why should I have to like.
End of the 3-foot, and that has been explained, and that's what we can do.
Yeah, that's all, we, we have never granted any variances inside of 3-foot for property lines for buildings. And mainly because you have to.
Well, that's based on why are the 40 other buildings around her within 3 to 6 inches, or on property.
I can't answer that, I have to.
Please answer that.
Well, no, I can't answer it.
Why not?
Because I don't know what you're talking about, and I don't know what you were.
There's a lot of story sheds.
We're talk, we're here to talk about your problem.
Exactly.
Okay?
Like, if this is the rule on the law, and everybody's still adhering to it.
This is the rule, this is it, this is the rule. Okay, as simple as that.
It's not simple.
Well, I'm sorry, it is.
It is, because you're sitting on the other end of it.
Well, that's exactly right, that's exactly right, but you have to get a building permit, you're telling us we need variances.
I need a building permit.
And I'm telling you right now, we will not grant a variance less than 3 foot from the property line for a building.
So, if I tear this one down, put the other building back in the same spot, no harm to that.
Well, certainly, you're right, you're putting the building back up.
Why? It's not new construction, I didn't tear the other building down, I just moved it to the side while I was putting this one up.
I don't know, I'd have to see the situation, you'd have to come back meet with the mayor, but it sounds, it sounds to me like, you know, since you took the building down.
I didn't take it down, it was a wooden building on top of, you know, a wooden floor.
Right.
I screwed it.
If you have, if you have that, you can put it back, yes, there would be enough to say, but you're gonna build a new structure, and you're gonna get a building.
So, then it's like a 3 feet.
Yep, okay.
What happened? I don't know, 524 Cherry Street. And like I said, no one can carry it down there, but three people who obviously called in, who don't live down there, why is it any of their business? You know, how does it affect them? I'm curious.
Well, it doesn't, we, we would've found out sooner or later anyhow, so.
Well, I.
All right?
After the fact.
Well, then it, then it would've been worse.
Well, okay, anything else? Who do I give these papers to, who do I go see about this variance and?
Right here.
We can grant you the variance tonight of 3 foot, and that's all we can do. If you want to ask us for a variance of 3 foot, we would likely give it to you if you have the neighbor's permission, right here and now, you can pick up a permit tomorrow, otherwise, I think we're at the end of the discussion.
Then I will ask for that, and then I'll decide what to do with the building. You guys give me the permission fine, then I have some.
Do you have a sketch there?
Yes.
Do you have the, the permission?
I have everything. I've got the local neighbors, and I've got a diagram of the building itself, and where the existing building had sat, and proximity to the property lines around there. Plus, I did a little.
Do you have that?
Well.
You don't need one of your side.
I make sure I got everything, so that we can.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. And where's this set, where's all? And I guess here, just give me a minute here, come on, just slide up there so I can know what I'm talking about here. Where's your, uh?
That's just the 3D model, that was the first. The actual shed that I'm.
Yeah, I know.
I wrote a line, fence line, this is the fence line here.
So, here your, oh, this is this line here, give me a.
Well, it doesn't cover my whole property, it just covers the corner of my property. And the trees that I had existing on the property, and the fence line runs down, two people live here, one here, one here.
This wall, is this, is this whole thing the bottom, is this the wall?
Yes, it's just a, a smaller section on top.
Bottom of your wall here?
Sure, go ahead. Building's all ready now. That's just the 3D on there, so you know what it looks like.
Okay, just finish your [inaudible 00:09:54].
Uh, you're looking from Cherry Street, you're looking this way, Cherry Street runs out here, this is the back of my property.
This is the back of my property.
Right, this is Cherry Street, north is the 7th Street.
Okay. Northwest. Okay, I think I have it, you got it? Yeah, these, this is 524 Cherry Street, and he's asking for a variance on a setback on the west side and the north side of property, from 10 foot to 3 foot. Still moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, questionable motion. All those in favor, do you consent standing by?
Aye.
Those, no, that's out. Really not that bad, okay?
3 foot. I understand what you're saying, and I know I was.
Well, to the end of this.
Begin with.
And let me explain, let me explain to you why it's 3 foot, because we have had people that have put a 2-foot overhang in their building.
Right.
You know, over the 3 foot, then they put spouting, then the water runs off, and they have to get over there to do the siding and everything, so that's why we stop it through, okay?
Right, well, the roof is inclined.
I understand that.
That it was a level pitch, so they're worried, the water's going to go in the direction of my property, so everything was done to protect my neighbors.
All right, okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to recheck the building out, see what I think of this, talking holes that are existing, floor that's existing, you know what I mean? And the stability of this place could be, you know, the integrity is just wiped out.
All right.
Building.
Thank you, I'll let you wrap. You, you wanna address council? Oh, no, we just come down.
I mean, exterior, you know, it's so many. I do have a question, though. You know, you have.
Okay, what's your question?
She has questions.
No, I mean, just. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, this, what, yes.
And I can understand that anything that is done on your property in the borough has to have a permit, such as, if we wanna take a tree down, you know, or if we want to fix a roof on the side of the house, or something like that.
The other thing we require a permit for a roof, and we need a jump in there any time, at this point in time, is if you have to block the sidewalk, okay, where people would have to walk out onto the street to get around your property, we would ask you for a permit, and then you would have to give us a certificate of insurance to guarantee us that you're, you have a liability insurance if somebody gets hurt and it doesn't fall back to the roof.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Fred?
I love you.
Just jumping ahead a little bit, just quick discussion, you know, I have to, I'm starting to feel threatened.
I'm sorry, that's great.
Well, you might as well come in too here, tell me. Don't be bashful. All right, go ahead.
Mostly, we come in here and make a report, Lev and I are [inaudible 00:11:49], and we hear the comments from all of you, how you're proud of our response times, and kind of pat us on the back, and telling us how good of a job you're doing. But, we, I decided this evening, Lev and I decided to bring along with us the reason that, that we do so good, that we are a very, very, very small fraction of the success of the fire department. In front of you is a report stating a record number of calls again this month, which is the second time we broke an all-time fire company record of total responses, which are 61. That's one short of two calls of dead for a volunteer department, and our response times have yet to fall, and our crew size hasn't fell at all, however, you will see a substantial decrease in that because of our juniors going back to school and so on for the next month. But, the reason I brought these guys is that with the 61 calls in August, September 1st was 24 minutes old, and we were dispatched to a industrial rescue at County Line Quarry. You know, you know how the guys train, and I've given you their certifications and everything. The way this works, we're dispatched in a general mode of, we have an industrial rescue, that's all we know, so we get out of bed, and do more precise than the people who don't get up for everything. We have what we call an all-call, which is, when the first officer gets on the air, he's given an update at that time, he makes the decision, if he thinks he can handle with the guys that get up, or he requests additional equipment, and an all-call, which will mean that our sirens will be activated again, the people who work and have families that don't get up for every call at night, are then summoned to get up. I get up that day, got dressed, thinking an industrial rescue at 12:24 at County Line Quarry was probably a hoax call. I get down, and got in my car, start the vehicle, proceed up the driveway, and told them I was in route, at which time, being the first chief, I got the update. The update was, we have a first-party caller, which means this is the person that's in trouble calling, he is hanging upside down inside a stone crusher with his foot pin. That pretty much tells me I'm gonna go with an all-call. So, I got on the radio, and I requested that we be dispatched with an all-call. Our rescue came on the air, responded with six personnel, and I brought those personnel with you today. Lenny came on the air shortly after I did, he was given an update of the first party is on the phone again, and he's falling down inside the stone crusher at that time. The chief requested two additional rescues and an engine, when Assistant Chief Scotty Longelsberger arrived on scene, the guy was hanging inside the stone crusher. Contact was made with him, some voice contact, and he slept, and fell down inside the stone crusher. So, at that time, these gentlemen who know nothing about a stone crusher proceeded to, to do a rescue, which took just about 30 minutes. In that 30 minutes, there was constant communication, there was a helicopter putting air, an engine was sent to the ball field to land the helicopter. The helicopter land, landed, and the M.T. was put, or a medic was put inside the crusher. The guys rappelled down inside the crusher, got to him, opened some doors, shoveled the stone out, and got to this patient who at that time was in a critical state of shock. He was extirpated in a half hour, taken to the [inaudible 00:21:59]. He was extirpated in a half hour, uh, taken to the helicopter and flown away. The success of, of the fire department means very little, is very little about myself or Len. The success of the fire department is about the gentleman behind me, the gentleman who are going to be behind them. And, and I really need everybody to be aware of that, that we're not anything without them. This isn't Len Ury, Fred Smeltzer. This is the group of people who make us look like the people that we look like because they are the people who can make us look like total idiots if, uh, they so see fit. And I just wanted to take some time, given that it's 9/11, to, to tell you that, that this isn't a one-man show. It's not anything. It's a group of people who are extremely dedicated to, to Wrightsville Borough and the surrounding area of Helen Township to get these stupid jobs done. And that's just what we try to do every day. We try to fix stupid and if we're not successful, we can't get it done. So tomorrow we'll have another call. But, uh, if it wasn't for stupid, we wouldn't have anything to do.
Well, Fred, we really appreciate it. And I don't, I think probably, uh, at least the last three months or four months, we have all, at different points in life, been, and expressed our thank you to not only you and Len, but to the, to the, like you said, the guys that are sitting down back there. And we do really appreciate it. We are always in a position to try and do what we can. In the background, we have three people and, uh, we will continue to do that.
And, and it's important, uh, Mr. President, that these people hear that because I hear it every month. Len hears it every month. You see me every month. You see Len every month. And we talk, uh, they sit back there and who's doing TV interviews and who's doing this? Who's talking to council? It's just, uh, you know, they are so much more important than what I am or Len is, that it's, uh, it's amazing. Now, they hate to be here, but never want to stand up in front of you and talk. This is what it's about.
Well, we do appreciate it. Thank you. You want to have any questions? Do you want to, do you want to just fly your ears? Oh, go ahead.
Fred's been asking for a meeting with the Health and Safety Committee and I have been not doing as well as I wanted to be on it. However, if it suits, Sharon, Steve, and your crew, I would like October 10th at 6:30. Sorry, here. Sharon and Steve right here. Unless, unless we hear otherwise, that can only be changed.
And we will do our best to have our budget.
Do you want to, uh, you want to give your report then?
Uh, oh, I have a report, it's self-explanatory, except for the 61 calls, which I said, uh, six guys just completed the, uh, as many of you may have seen on television last night, the, uh, red blast, uh, training for the weekend. There's another phase that they need to go through there. As you can see, the band-aid's on the knees and so on. It was such a, an intense rescue program that they worked from, uh, from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 on Saturday, from 8:00 in the morning till 7:00 last night, which time one of the firefighters had to come home and go to work.
Well, do they work? Do they also work?
Some of them do. But, uh.
I'm not looking to do.
A lot of them have jobs and just don't go.
Well, we really appreciate it.
But that's our report. And, uh, is there any questions or anything anyone has other than that?
It's going to work a lot to hear Fred's explanation of stupid versus accident somehow. So it really is.
We've never been in an accident, so I explained it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, is this what you want? Well, I'm telling you, we are, we have such a long meeting tonight. It's just, I mean, you certainly can begin, but is it possible that, that you can meet with, uh, Mark? Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is the only opportunity that the consultants here from Alexandria, Virginia, and they're with us. We were formerly of our.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. All right, all right. Yeah, what? I mean, what and how long?
About 15 minutes. Uh, showered, presented, and given over to some of the staff.
What's the wish of council? We have an awful lot of things discussed. It's up to you people. Okay, one here. Good luck. If it was my decision, you probably would have to, would have to leave. Sorry, Mark, I'm going to miss you.
Thanks, Fred.
I'm cowardly.
Let's see. Blanket all and, uh.
Hey, I'll tell you what. Yeah, go ahead. Let's, 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 let's get a favorable, I want to get, I want to get the police officer out of here. I don't want to be sitting there. I don't want to be doing that. See, can I have a, can I have a brief note in a minute?
Alfred.
From the September 11th meeting. Thank you. For the seconds that I can, any questionable motion? All those in favor who consent saying aye? Uh, opposed? No, I have it. Thank you. Okay, Mark? Do you want to, do you want to give your report, please?
Yeah.
Because no such duty. I don't want to take a run in exactly like you.
In August, in the borough, there was 116 calls. We had four accident investigations, traffic arrests for 25, criminal investigations for 11, and criminal arrests for 18. Represented, uh, 116 calls of 23.5% of our total calls. I haven't been involved with Wrightsville Borough that much, but it seems like your numbers are pretty consistent. I used to do Helen Borough and they stay up however tall. So it seems like you guys talk to me 23 times a week.
Right, thanks.
On the Operation Nightlight officer, the chief put it above. What Operation Nightlight does is we came up with probation officers and we do unexpected visits outside the normal realm of the probation department. We start at 5:00 P.M. and we work till 1:00 A.M. We go to houses in Wrightsville Borough, Helen Township and all boroughs. There's the people who own probation and they're not expecting us in the evening. Federally funded program, uh, the York County District Attorney's Office helps us and also the Sheriff's Department. We have five people, their team. Like I said, we just go knock on the doors and there are various things. If they're about, have a chat, pornography, choreography, we win, check their computers, it'd be various things.
How can you do that?
It's rather than once, once a month, once a month. However, it doesn't always do that. It's hard to do that.
Right, right.
It's hard to coordinate because they have a limited number of probation officers.
Right, right.
They take the probation officer, these teams. You know that would be difficult.
I search Morse, I had Simon.
No, no, the Morse is the condition of their probation.
Oh, okay.
Search their house and search everything there, even if it's their parents' house or if they, uh, share the residence with them.
I agree.
So that works pretty good. Uh, the chief shows that we have two truck inspections. We inspected six trucks during the 89 hours. One truck is taken out of service for a serious violation and there's five citations issued.
We're able to get an answer on these, on this truck situation, in other words, their own report. But not only do we get credit for them, but I mean, these, these arrests were taken out of Helen Township. So my question is, in other words, is the, the money from fines getting up between borough and Helen Township or?
No, it should be, it should go towards the borough, wherever the citation was issued. In a truck, in a truck inspection, if you stop the truck in Wrightsville Borough, you can take them a half of one out of Helen Township to a safe spot to be inspected.
Right, right.
The truck was taken off the road in the borough, taken to another area.
Okay.
Those trucks that were stopped in the borough should be of Wrightsville Borough.
In other words, it doesn't matter where they're inspected, it's where the stuff, it's where the violation was placed. Okay.
The space is in transit, there's not enough areas.
Well, yeah, we understand that, you understand that.
We take them to Jerkston, but, uh.
Right, right.
They should actually all be, I'll have to check, but.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
They should all be at Wrightsville Borough.
You know the answer.
God, you know the answer. The answer is that, uh, Sergeant is correct. If they're stopped in the borough or they're found in the borough, then we do get the finances. Although we nev- we have not gotten finances from any truck inspection for some time, over a year. Chief's explanation is for that, to me, was that the gentleman that sets this up usually sets it out up on the full straight road. So basically, they get them in the township before they get to Wrightsville Borough and they take them to Jerkston. So, so we don't really get any money. That money's not sitting down. That money goes to Helen Township because the incident took place in Helen Township. Uh, what the chief did tell me, though, he feels that it's a, um, uh, a health and safety concern, and that's why he put it on here, for us, knowing that if they stop the trucks prior to them coming to our borough, then them dangerous vehicles are not traveling in, in our borough until that point.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think it should be also noted then that, in other words, that.
I, I wasn't aware of that.
Times are not, should not be, and are not included in the, the call times appear as though they're really more relevant.
I actually discussed that with him today and he gave me that.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine. Okay. Any other questions for, go ahead.
Have the lines been used to find any cars that were painted on the road?
Um, I'm not sure. I'd have to check the arrest records. When did they make, was it painted a few weeks ago?
Uh, yeah, a little last month. Okay. I have not, I mean, I travel first, maybe that's the end of what I'm aware of. I have not seen anyone down there running active driver or speed devices down there.
Or front steering, yeah.
Yeah.
I see there's 25 arrests, but that's without actually going through the citations of where they were.
Right, that's fine, that's fine. Okay. Any other questions? We're good? Okay?
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Box starting?
You're up, Mark. Do an introduction.
Yeah, I'm just going to do just a brief, uh, brief, I'm Mark Slade, the president, next chair of Harris. And I want to thank the council and Dixon and everybody for allowing us to do this tonight while we have our, uh, our company members here tonight. Um, and I'm going to actually introduce Claire Storm, who I think you know real well, uh, to, uh, just introduce her, our consultant, to get this thing going.
You want to answer us?
You'll turn your neck if you're, uh. Right. Claire, of course, president of the council, but yeah, you was up here.
Right, and I also want to thank you. I know that we have a, a long agenda, um, and as I said before, this is our only opportunity to have these two ladies with us. Um, Mary Means, um, from Mary Means Associates and Jackie Barton, uh, her assistant. And we just presented at Columbia Borough Council and came over as quickly as we could. Um, I also would like to, um, just make note that the, a prior Borough Council in Wrightsville and Columbia and there that all contributed $1,000 to, uh, this study. And, uh, matching funds are also provided by River Town, uh, Lancaster County and the York Community Foundation. Um, Councilman Lentz and Mayor Rambler have been at, uh, some of our workshops. They appreciate that. I know they're certainly very busy people. Um, Wrightsville has a lot going on right now with the Lime Kells, uh, the new Borough Office, uh, down on the river, an active historic group. And our plan, this River Town Heritage Development Strategy Plan, is intended to add value to what you're already doing and to highlight some additional opportunities. So to keep things moving, I want to introduce Mary Means, uh, from Mary Means Associates, uh, out of New York, Virginia.
Hi, everyone. I really want to follow up with Mark's thanking you for making time for some of your busy agenda. Um, we've been working with you for nearly a year now, I guess, with the, with the River Town. Since, uh, several of us who are not here tonight. Um, Jackie Barton on last step has been, uh, project manager. Uh, but working, working deep in paper, who are a wonderful, talented architectural firm here in, um, York, have also been a really key part of it, as well as our blanket economist, Elaine Carmichael, who keeps us from going, hey, why, by reminding us that the thing has to work from a numbers standpoint. You know what the River towns are, I'm sure. You're living in one right at the center. From the studies perspective, we've been looking at Columbia, Wrightsville and the area as the core communities and then a little further out, Acornac, Long Island, Washington Borough. So that's what the geography we've been dealing with. Um, driving here doesn't mean cars, but it means what is the thrust of it? And why now and what's this all about? Part of it is that the river itself, um, I know you probably have noticed this, is really kind of changing. It would have been unheard of 20 years ago to have really looked at recreation and canoeing and boating on, on the Susquehanna. But that's really what is, what is there. It's this enormous resource that's, that's, uh, right out there. And there are a number of active groups, River Town, USA is one example of it, who are really trying to kind of make improvements in the quality of place here and the quality of community. And there's increasingly, I think, an understanding that some of the history and heritage and scenic character here are really important parts of why you like living here and it's important to keep those kinds of communities changing growth. Um, there's a lot going on, as Claire said. Um, I'm not going to go pure all of this, but you're, you're aware of it. And it ranges from small-scale things to very large ones. And groups are working actively around each of these. Um, why do this? Why talk about heritage? Why not just start over and build new stuff? But one thing is, we really wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, what are the opportunities out here? I know when someone said, um, they're thinking of doing condominiums in Columbia, that the units are going to sell for $250,000, $300,000, $400,000. People are going, nobody's going to pay that. But those of us who are not from here, who live an hour and a half away in the metropolitan Baltimore or in Washington area, who are of a certain age and are kind of looking around for what would be a nice town to, to sort of settle in and get out of the rat race, and I want water nearby and amenities and nice town character, and wow, look at how expensive it is. It's horrible to live here. So we really think you're poised to see a lot more of the Baltimore, Washington, uh, market because of also the interstate connections and very good transportation here. It's a very good place for people who are continuing to work and, um, businesses can all continue to, to do so. And you're beginning to see some of this. Um, you've got a lot of amenities going for it. It may look like the landscape you see every day today, the buildings you see every day. Try to look at them a little bit more freshly and it's there. And prices are rising from up here. Our firm, uh, led the team doing the Pennsylvania Garage Tours Strategic Plan. This whole section of South Central Pennsylvania is one of the prime markets for that. Um, but there's some challenges that need to be, to be managed and capitalized on those opportunities. The town centers really need a little bit more activity and investment. Uh, most people are going someplace else to buy stuff. Uh, so you're losing a lot of the retail because there's nothing, um, there's a few places to, to eat and to, to, to buy goods. And we're thinking that those could be really reinforced back in the, the town centers. Now, I guess as much as anything else, um, there's, this is not just here. It's all over Pennsylvania, this history of competing communities. I said at a public workshop that we did several months ago, that, um, sometimes, because I've worked all over Pennsylvania for years now, and it just seems as an outsider coming in, that me from the outside, an investor from outside, say, does not see the town and borough and township lines, this little spider web of municipal lines here. Economies don't see those lines. Markets don't see those lines. But sometimes I feel what people in Pennsylvania have been here, because you never move. You're, you're like, somewhere I saw a statistic, Pennsylvanians are in place, the, the fewer moves you've been in place longer than any place else in the country. Maybe all you, sometimes it seems like all you do is see the lines. Um, and there, uh, this history of competing communities is one of the things I think is, uh, an obstacle for Pennsylvanians to overcome in terms of the, of the competitive region, which is where Inaugural Global is, is not allowed to do. So here, about down here, this section, we're over here, just around the corner in August. And we're over here giving you a briefing on some of the concepts that are in this overall regional strategic plan that we've been doing. Some of the goals, you can read as well as I can, but the connections to the river are really important. Trying to impose emphasis on the town centers, the hearts of towns, and a lot of other things to be able to keep more of a pleasant rural character around them, the nat- natural environment. Um, you've got terrific and fascinating stories of history as river communities here, including transportation and factory underground railroad, all of those. And it's really a, a possibility of really positioning these as, uh, these towns in particular, as a gateway to the recreation opportunities. There are some real opportunities coming up with the, uh, uh. development and a lot of initiative now to, to create a lot more protected environment with recreational opportunities in. And when that happens, the towns that are on the edges of it are in a very good position to provide gateway services and businesses and things for visitors who'll be coming to use them. And I'm sure that at one point, probably 50 years ago, a group like yourselves in Gatlinburg, Tennessee thought, she's out of her mind making a statement like that, but look what has happened next to the Great Kentucky Mountains in the gateway communities along there. I am not suggesting Gatlinburg as a model for how to do it. I am suggesting that there are some market opportunities that these communities around should be looking ahead to. In fact, you should be looking ahead to what you want to happen as opposed to getting what you get if you don't look ahead. So the projects and things I'm gonna show you for a minute here, we've worked on it, we drilled down in some individual places here and thus the initiative, which are longer term, bigger type of projects to get your arms around, and then the pilot projects are things that we think could be relatively easily implemented. And actually, we've probably been wrong on one of these places in Wrightsville. The approach overall is to really not, this is not on heritage tourism, is to say, how can we make a really great, great towns and a great place to live, because great, great places to live are great places to visit? And how to try to keep and identify the stuff that's important to the region, important to you as the area is changing, as population is growing, and then try not to override or, there's a lot going on, how can we add value by complementing the kinds of activities and energy that's being put into those. So at a regional level, these are initiatives that are intended to really connect the towns, the communities, kind of physically, dramatically, and intellectually and emotionally, try to help you all begin to try to act, if you're interested in doing so, as more of a margin place than three or four separate places. And the real opportunities for creating, same opportunities for bicycling and pedestrian trails, because they're incredibly popular these days. And to also emphasize keeping the lands around the towns along the river as free and as natural as you possibly can. Someone said, I think, as a, kind of one of the workshops, we've, that never, they never thought about it, but our approach was to look at Wrightsville as a place to go to instead of through. And we're, we come here a lot, we're not from here. And what we've noticed is that you could be across the bridge and in Columbia before you know that there was a town you went through, right? And then you're turning around and coming back, if Wrightsville's lucky, otherwise they're, they're heading on. But there's something about the kind of nature of that large intersection out there that makes it kind of zoom, it's like big interchange. So that was one of the things that we really wanted to do, was like do some things that could help this common place that pops out more on the map. So we wanted to see a lot more activity, an emphasis on howl on the way to the river, a little bit more infill development, because there's some opportunities on North Front Street. We've got some ideas, a couple people have been saying for a long time, it'd be great if we could put a pedestrian bridge across the old pilings. Well, if you're John D. Rockefeller, you might be able to afford it, but we know you're not. So what we came up with was some ideas for creating, using those supports to kind of build a pedestrian walkway out there to catch you out of parkway on either side of the river. And then maybe someday, someday, there'll be a John D. Rockefeller. And the one that took some real, some gasping nuts, this one who said the American Legion Hall. How many here are American Legion members? Okay. Someone said, oh, they won't like this, but one of the ideas was that building is one of the last structures remaining from the maze of the early bridge, and it's a perfect location, as one thinks about it, as you arrive here for a visitor's center and some of the kinds of places where you can buy something to drink and some snacks. So with that in mind, let's take a look at what might, what might happen here. This looks familiar, this looks familiar out here. It's a goofy intersection if you're a driver. We just came over from Columbia and I can't believe I made a left turn to go on the street. That is, that's really unsafe out there, as you know. So let's see what it could be. Jackie, should this stay away? Okay, we're gonna--
I'm there yet.
All right. Now, north is down here.
Yes.
Okay? Because it's here, we didn't, we didn't want to turn the projector on the side. So north is down here, there's a bridge coming over, and we're here at this intersection in here. So let's take a look at what is, this is the existing situation. What are we doing?
Showing the front street.
Okay. South front--
Those are the two seats.
Well, it could be like some city town park. Yeah.
Let me see.
Town park. Okay. And I think I said next to the-- Okay, you wanna do that again?
The parking is still in place.
It just looks better. A lot of times parking, if it's got some shrubbery and greenery kind of buffering it so that from the street, you're not seeing the gradators of cars, you can accommodate parking pretty well, it's gonna look pretty nice. All right, now, now we'll get to the bridge landing, all right? So let's see what we're thinking of doing here. All right?
An option.
An option would be to create a little bit more of a platter and a more platted and landscaped environment there. Is this really a focus or is it just the--
The wall.
Is the wall, okay? Or I thought maybe it's just my eyes. Anyway, we're talking about sort of brick or cobble or some kind of different kind of paving material for crosswalks here, so there's a real sense that people are here too, and it also kind of narrows this a little bit, makes it a little bit safer for pedestrians to come across. And a lot more of a sense with the landscape in here of this being a place that says you're here, this is Wrightsville. And here you see a, a little rehabilitated early bridge building, it's kind of what this is going for.
Unless you wanted to get real crazy.
Are we getting real crazy? Here's what you might really do, you might actually put a traffic circle around the roundabout here.
Excuse me. I scoot in the, I'm sorry, I apologize.
You might send a line to take traffic for it.
No, there's traffic anywhere. No, it wasn't.
Well, this obviously is an idea that would have to have a lot of cooperation from PennDOT, and one would have to be able to get emergency vehicles and buses and ATW surrounded. But it's not impossible to do. We looked at the riotesses on that, it's not possible to do. And it definitely would give you a sense, two things it would do, if you were able to do it, it would be a lot safer place to, to go from one side of the street to the other, and it would slow traffic down through there. And some of you want to speed through, that maybe isn't an advantage, but it actually is, if you're a merchant, want people to know that there's something here that says the way of Columbia.
And I would just add that one contains one, contains the way for the other. If you need to do one to get enough support for the next step, you don't have to wait until you're ready for a round.
Or, maybe we include this strategically, this is such a wild and crazy idea, we'll go back to the more modest one and actually do that, which would make a great improvement ourselves.
I just want to throw a comment on this. In the whole process with planning and all three communities and workshops, one community in looking at this intersection and brainstorming about it said, hey, we want to get started on something in Wrightsville. And a group of you, this room and other citizens have already, the meeting has sort of jumpstart the ideas about what could happen here. You guys are leading the way actually in all three.
In fact, it's interesting, as we were brainstorming and putting all of this together, we thought, well, we ought to make that one a real long-term project, because it's gonna take a long time for, for that to get it happen. We were just done at the workshop that night, the next night, when Bert said, we want to do that, we really want to do, not necessarily the one with the roundabout here, but we want to do something about a landscaped area.
So the roundabout was driven locally as well, you had no pun intended. It's boring out. You know, we had pulled back from the idea of a roundabout, thinking it was too much. Locally, people were saying, a public workshop and out here, why can't we look into that? I mean--
And by the way, we weren't looking at it as too much in terms of expense or too much in terms of overdoing it. We were looking at it as, it's a small town, and it's supposed, all of these have to have leadership passion behind them. They have to have champions to say, we're gonna make that happen. It's a small town and that's a really big project, and maybe we ought not to put it up front. But there really does seem to be developing, at least it's a rallying point for doing something in the area. Let's bounce through to the rest of them, so we can-- I just wanted to briefly let you know what we're, what they're thinking about in the other places, and this is again building off the downtown, the largest of the three communities, to try to get more people living there, playing a little bit more, putting a little bit more interest in, behind or emphasis behind preserving and rehabilitating buildings downtown, particularly for housing and the upper stories, housing offices. And instead of thinking of historic preservation as just a precious activity for a few buildings or whatever, is to really begin to think about it as a strategy for economic and urban revitalization there, connecting the water a little bit better to the river, and again, using this pedestrian pier. Do we have an image coming up now, pedestrian pier? We don't have--
How much, how much longer? Don't, don't get me wrong--
We're nearly done.
I, I'm, I really--
I know.
You know, we talked about this, Mark, our Mark, had brought us this presentation two months ago, talking about the intersection, which we are definitely interested in.
Right, we're on three more slides.
And just to let you know that there's gonna be a, a time within the near future that the Borough will end or be responsible for all of the riverfront from Crix Creek to this bridge you're talking about--
I know.
--which is very vital, because we want a river attraction this time. So, you know, there is a lot of, there is a lot of good can come out of this.
Absolutely, and you've got great opportunities--
Yeah, we do, we do.
--to go over the--
I'll let you--
So let's, let's bounce on--
I just don't want you to think I'm against this, I just--
Okay.
Okay? And Claire will back me up, I hope.
And, and Mary Adler, there's a river trail coming through, the Bike and Hike Trail, and we're trying to better do better, you know, they're connecting the people coming by on that with the opportunities for stopping a while in Marya and getting off their bikes and buying an ice cream cone, and potentially doing some interpretive activities at the, at the vested furnace site, so that there's a lot more recognition of the, of the great industrial past here. And again, the Garen Memorial Bridge is really wide and because bicycling is really big, so is walking, we think there's room there to even simply put a painted line to make it a little bit safer, in particular the eastbound lane on it is so wide, and yet you can really feel like you're walking on a sidewalk, like traffic is right there by you. But if there were just a simple line painted along there for bikes and for pedestrians to feel a little safer, we think that would help a lot. And obviously, we're doing some things around interpretation and bringing the, helping this South Central, the Tiberian Canal remains be there, be a lot more prominent there and some better recreation opportunities down on Long Island. I think what's gonna happen next for this is we're gonna complete the plan, we're gonna be handing it over to the Lancaster York Heritage Region and River Town USA and all of you. This is a strategic framework for the towns, its ideas, its concepts. We're gonna be giving it to you with what they think are the logical partners, what they think some of these things could cost, and who we think should probably take the lead on some of them. But we're not, we're gonna be riding off this sunset and somebody's gonna have to become the champion for them. We're looking forward to coming back and stopping in Wrightsville because that would be a destination instead of a hike to the other side. So if you're here for any questions, and then we'll get over here and let you sit back to your regular business.
Do you want to have any questions? Mark, our, I mean, Mark's been great, Danny? Okay? If Mark hasn't worked on it, he's been something as many meetings though.
Mark's been great.
I really thank Mark for the, the participation, and it's been great to have that, that leadership here, yeah.
Thanks a lot. We're really--
Thank you all. Letting us on your--
That's okay.
Thank you all.
Wrightsville works.
No, this is great, thank you very much. It's been great, it's been great, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks again, you want to, you want to get to work? See you, Mark.
Keith? Just a little boy.
Excuse me, I have another question. Oh, I'm gonna just say--
Me?
I don't know who this goes out--
That's okay.
But we are new here in the area. That was a beautiful presentation, I'm all for improvement. Does Wrightsville have the money to put this stuff for?
No.
And is that gonna, is that property tax--
No, we go back from a federal--
--that--
No. This would all be, I mean, even this lady, this consultant, I mean, that's all paid through for grants.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying you don't, in the end pay for it through taxation, but no, there would, there would be no project starting in Wrightsville without grant money.
Okay.
It's just impossible.
Okay.
We're just a small blue town, blue collar worker town, and it's never gonna change.
And I kind of like the way it is.
Well, we do too.
It's very all beautiful and nice--
That's why we're here.
--and gorgeous.
That's why we're here.
But also, there still has, you know--
I know.
--it's really--
We appreciate your input, and before there'd be anything done to this, I mean, that would have to go through somebody, you know, he's like--
Okay, okay.
I got a question, where she was referring to a circle there, a placemat, you had to make sure ATW would get it out.
Yeah, right.
You think that she's talking about something similar to that obstacle force, I just don't even go over that third.
Oh, yeah, I thought you were gonna say a border, you have a standard obstacle, yeah.
I think, I think it's a--
Then, well, 462 would be closed at--
I just want that intersection now, out here, the--
You have second with a greater? What is that, bear? Yeah, right. Okay, thank you, thank you. Go ahead. Trans report, the Keith is gonna be out of here in five minutes. Okay, go ahead, Keith.
Yeah, in front of you then is the audit report, rather than the, as far as the checks written out. And then something I would like to, before I do any further with the report, I would like to say, because of last month, we're trying to, to sync the payment of these bills and everything, and I surprised the gals in the office, because I was, I was on vacation the one week that we typically pay these, and that forced Laurie and Carol to step to the plate and take care of the bills for the month. And I just want to say that, you know, say that to the authority, but right now, just on behalf of the council, Carol, she did a really good job with, it was, I think I found minimal changes that I made, I don't know if I'm a bit, but I really appreciate that. So I was a week earlier that I wanted to pay the bills and they weren't quite ready with matching up all the purchase orders and stuff. So that's, the bills, again, Carol was able to get those out this month, appreciate that. She did a really good job, she gets a little bit more acclimated to our vendors and all that kind of stuff, so that's all. I'm not sure that there was any extraordinary bills that were, that were part of that list. There's really nothing out of the ordinary for this month that I saw. There was-- I'll just stop right there. Are there any questions for, for any of these vendor bills or invoices that they got paid? Those are the electronic, ones the payroll taxes, we do that electronic, so they're, they're drafted out. Want to motion for clear?
Yeah, I need, I need to just, there's a row, is there any questions for you?
I think I kind of found somewhere, I might, I might read the key.
I don't think he's done. If you want, if you want to approve his check register, that's fine. So, second?
Second.
Questions on the motion? I would just favor you to present a saying, aye?
Aye.
Close?
Okay. And then as far, I would again, just pull your attention, skip all that paper that you're looking at, and the, the final two or three pages that are on the landscape mode, again, I've given you the budget updates, which is becoming more and more critical as we get closer to our month of October, I guess, the law would be having a budget meeting and such. I just want to say that there's, there was some subsequent events that have happened prior to the August thing, and the very things that you need to know is, the earned income tax check, it came in August, it didn't get deposited since September, so that's not reflected in there. Once those payments would have been received in March or August, when they were received, we are in very good shape with the budget. The other portion that came in, just to alert you that the, I wasn't anticipating that August would be the highest collection for the EMST tax. I believe that we budgeted somewhere around 20--
Okay, go ahead, Keith. Go ahead, Keith. Yeah, in front of you then is the audit report, rather than the as far as the checks written out. And one thing I would like to, before I do any follow-up with the report, I would like to say because of last month, we're trying to sync the payment of these bills and everything, and I surprised the gals in the office because I was, I was on vacation one week that we typically pay these, and that forced Laurie and Carol to step to the plate and take care of the bills for the month. And I just want to say that, you know, say that to Laurie, but right now, just on behalf of the council, Carol, she did a really good job with, I think I found minimal changes that I made, I believe on the, but I really appreciate that. So, I was a week earlier that I wanted to pay the bills, and they weren't quite ready with matching up all the purchase orders and stuff. So, that's the bills, again, Carol was able to get those out this month, appreciate that. She did a really good job. She gets a little bit more acclimated to our vendors and all that type of stuff, so that's all. I'm not sure that there was any extraordinary bills that were, that were part of that list. There's really nothing out of the ordinary for this month that I saw. There was, I'll just stop right there. Are there any questions for, for any of these vendor bills or invoices that we have to pick up and pay? Those are the electronic ones, the payroll taxes, we do that electronic, so they're drafted out. Want to motion for a clear?
Yeah, I need to, I need to, there's a row, is there any questions for you there?
I think I kind of found somewhere, I might have found it, it's Keith.
I don't think he's done. If you want, if you want to approve his check register, that's fine. So, second?
Second.
Questions on a motion? All those in favor, you consent saying aye?
Aye.
Those, okay.
Okay, and then as far, I would again, just call your attention, skip all that paper that you're looking at, and the final two or three pages that are on the landscape mode, again, I've given you the budget updates. These are becoming more and more critical as we get closer to our month of October, I guess, while we have the budget meetings and such. I just want to say that there's, there was some subsequent events that have happened prior to the August thing, and the very things that you need to know is the earned income tax check, it came in August, it didn't get deposited until September. So, that's not reflected in there. Once those payments would have been received in March or August, when they were received, we are in very good shape with the budget. The other portion that came in, just to alert you that the, I wasn't anticipating that August would be the highest collection for the EMST tax. I believe that we budgeted somewhere around twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand dollars for that for the year. If you remember, at least the, the older guys in the council here that have been around, that was basically a shot in the dark based on some estimates that York County had given us. I believe you'll see that by next month, when the September report's finished, we will have been, will exceed that budgeted amount. We were slightly over twenty-eight thousand.
That was a shot in the dark.
So, some of the bigger employers within the borough reported their taxes that missed past quarter, which I wasn't anticipating. So, I think that, that was good. We did the best we could with the information given to us by earned income tax, and I believe we want to be very well pleased with that as, as the year progresses and the final numbers come in. The other two items that I have for you is the county did come through on a ten thousand dollar, would you call that a grant, a little, little grant?
Right.
Took care of some of our engineering, and also then, correct, we got one for, like a check for fourteen hundred fifty-six dollars that was also for the North Third Street project, and some of those cost. I don't, I think it was the gas bill.
Yeah, it was, it was reimbursement for what we, what the borough was charged when we tore a gas line.
Yes.
Okay.
As council authorized by the, 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 uh, two thousand and six, a recent program on, and not to revolve accounting procedures on that one. I believe we've got that straightened out, and for a, give a center of representation, and not operations, same sense.
So, okay, so Keith knows what can be paid out, what's the fuel to that project and revolve these, how we do that?
Okay, good. Just, just for future use, when, when we bid, we can't just have that contract to do additional.
Right, I understand.
But as far as payment costs, because that exists. We're involved, all did, and I, I think in that case, municipal services represent that, that, that's the goal, to do the best effort for the boroughs and the work. Last thing I have, also, a fact of the suing enforcement officer, suing enforcement issue. You know that the authority is, is designing an expansion, or an upgrade, an upgrade to the treatment plan. Planning modules for land development are a state-required form that has to show to show adherence to your plan, that, you know, here's, goes back to nineteen seventy-two county plan. We prepare a resolution for plan revision that council needs to adopt at some point that says the authorities propose a development of a parcel of land identifies the treatment plan. The borough finds that the subdivision described in the attached module conforms to applicable sewage-related zoning and other sewage-related municipal ordinance plans, and a comprehensive plan of pollution control work called management has a resolution that's basically saying you adopt and submit to the DEP a revision to your official city facility plan, adopt the module which shows the expansion treatment plan. That's in a resolution that really has to be adopted by the council, and it's already set up, Carol, to have the resolution on board and sealed, put on there. It only requires the signature of the secretary, but I would recommend the council, so does ours, that the resolution be adopted. Get up, doesn't it, or call, please. Let's, can you, can you get the first one? Dash, one, okay, five. So, I would wish to add a fact that this would be a resolution two thousand and six dash five, for planning modules for a treatment plan. Planning modules are drawings. No, planning modules are a, a planning, it's a series of forms, talk about reporting of what, in this case, projects is to have the upgrade four hundred thousand gallon per day to, and details that more than, a planning module for development, that would have a lot. Just give me a day, if we were all created, if we were expanding treatment plan, you wouldn't be doing planning modules, you'd be doing the flat, flat thirty-seven, like the whole area, what flows you're going to have in the future, et cetera, et cetera. Since there's no change in the size of the plant, there was, there's really no significant change here, so I don't feel that. Okay. Can I have a motion, that effect?
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Okay, questions on a motion? All those in favor, you consent saying aye? Those, aye, aye. Thank you. Do I have to either seal or something?
Yeah, so you can get that, if you're part of it.
Okay.
And just last thing on that project you just heard about, that I gave Neil with the grants, line grants for doing that type of project.
Right.
Recreation, by the lines, gotten some, or some, or, 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 or.
Right.
City's gotten some, there's a lot of them.
Okay, all right.
Another question, Mark. We're getting sidewalk replacement projects around town, and they're turning into do-it-yourself projects that stretch out two, three, and four weeks and questionable quality. Is there any way we can get a handle on that, that other municipalities get a handle on it?
Absolutely. I think you're, first of all, you have a, a good section I put in your borough ordinance that we wrote thirty years ago, about the quality of the ordinance, for the quality of concrete, establishment.
What I find is you can, and Carol's been giving copies of that with permits for sidewalk ordinance, is complete with, I think, a, a letter, a sign saying that they got a copy of the sidewalk ordinance. But even after that, unfortunately, some people claim not to be able to read, and other people just go ahead and do what they want to do anyway, and then you get in a situation where you need to remember the head if you're going to enforce the sidewalk ordinance. Is there any way that we can, that other municipalities avoid all that headache and get the projects started and wrapped up?
Almost every client that has a spec store has a, that's one of Dave's tools of enforcement, you know, the act of the facts.
Who is inspecting it for the different municipalities?
Uh, most of the councils either had a roadmaster doing it for their code, their permit officer, and, uh, roadmaster, streetmaster, he personally was around town all the time, who has time to just property, you know, go look at it.
The mayor's been there.
The mayor's been at the school, but, 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 but. Another thing you need to do, and I'm sure we didn't do this on up here, but any time somebody wondered, they stirred it, we insisted that we have the engineer down to get line grades.
That's in your, but inspection is great, but the concrete is not, like, right, part of the waste of their own.
Yeah, in that one particular, well, not to belabor the issue, but they're not complying with the drawing that they put down. There's no way they had five-foot sidewalks up there. They don't need, they need four. My question was, they're even going to have four if they get the purpose, but anyhow, that's.
I think I got a call today from a gentleman asking for a copy of my handicap detail.
Which are, actually, it's possible, though, if it's up there on the ground, because that's, that ended. We did talk about that up there.
Is it a guy or a day, I think, I think, I think, your house?
Yeah.
I gave him to Dave, yeah, for which.
If they are having trouble up there, would you stay on top of that for a few days on?
Yeah, I'm lying, I just hope, I see the gas company's there replacing the gas service, we probably take care of the work, but there's still like forms.
Okay, there's forms, okay, maybe I'll get that back.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, since, uh, let me introduce you to, I think, one of our new solicitors, and we are going to introduce your assistant this evening.
Yes, Brooke Stacey with us, and tonight, I think we'll be over, I'm trying to introduce her to some of your lawyers, she's an associate and stockholder, has been with us for a little more than a year now, and is working in our musical group, and is, here will be assisting me on a lot of the work that we do with you, assisting Steve, obviously, as well, so we're glad to have her along tonight.
This is, let me counsel Mary Odlers, your request, I hope to see him, and he has relinquished his responsibilities to, uh, so, uh, council. He's still something important. All right, thank you. First up, the fence ordinance, we made the changes, I guess, for people's criminal in creating the initial draft of that version. So, I'm just saying, you know, Steve, the nice thing is, is I come to these meetings, someone else has done the work, and I get the credit. Now I'm, now I'm being caught up in working that work, so I just want to give credit where credit is due. So, I believe that, um. You have that written down?
I, Stephen has been advertised. Yes, Stephen indicated to me that he had, he was giving me a, a, a ordinance to break a law for signature, he did not include it in the, in the file that he gave me today. So, I don't, so we only have the original to sign, but we can produce that for you if you wish to pass it.
Yeah, does anyone have any objections to that? Now, you've all seen it, we made the minor changes, and Neil's request, we don't, normally, when we make final approval on an ordinance, it's here in front of us, I sign it, it gets the seal on it. If anyone has any objections, we can approve it, unless you want to wait for another month.
Yeah.
You want to think about that? Oh, okay, all right, okay.
The changes we've made.
I'm sorry.
I have a copy of the ordinance right here.
So, you said I signed it.
The changes that we made were, were very benign.
Okay. So, I need a motion to accept the offensive ordinance as presented, it has been advertised, with the understanding that we will sign it unless it gets, okay, or a second to that? Mark, any questions on a motion? All those in favor, you consent saying aye?
Aye.
Those?
Okay, the stop sign, I believe that you folks are going to be doing a traffic study, that's what needs to be done in order to take the next step, to give a stop sign and stall, so.
Stop signs are a stall, I think we're allowed to keep them up and enforce it for many years. Has, have we, have we tentatively notified your county planning to do the study?
Okay. So, that's, that's your next step, that's your good shape there.
Yeah, just go after another month, that's it.
Right.
So, I introduced, sometimes new stop signs need flashers on, for periods of time. These are all, well, yeah, these are in, these are all allies, which I'm sure, I mean, it's not like it's Main Street or something. The ones right in back of the bank, coming up on the, uh, Eighth Street, the other one's off of Garden Avenue, on the Seventh Street, heading east there. There's two places there, so, but that, that's a valid question, John. Are you, other question?
I'm not aware of one you'd like.
Okay. All right. Okay, a comprehensive plan of zoning, that is not something that I was addressing this month. No, we, we, we just put it, we sort of put a good chip through between the engineer and the solicitor, and we put a record rule through the engineer, solicitor, and health and safety, so that's where it is.
My engine is there on the campus, so there it is.
Because that's where it is.
So, I'll make a recommendation that you contact York County planning commission, they can just, for planning, uh, group them down to talk to you about that, or nothing. I would have to talk to you, I mean, I don't want to talk to you anymore here, but they, they're in the business to help you. They won't do a comprehensive plan if it's on screen.
I, I think where we are is we're looking for funding for a comprehensive plan, we're committed to, we don't, so, and I think what we're looking for is you could investigate that for us in your office and start looking for funding, and buzz up the date on, when that will be available, if you'd like to get that pile of money in place, and then we'll work on, go to work on.
Well, you know what, maybe it would still be good to, to set up this, because they may be able to give suggestions on grants too. So, the primary grant I would recommend would be five, which is between the block, which will pay for the fourth or third street. They grant, they fund planning, but also chance to, to discuss twenty-three thousand dollars. Same people, York County planning commission, who would be recommending a planning, work to do, or in the same office next door, people are giving grants to the block. I'm not being any, you know, we're just, we have an agent on.
Yeah, Pam Sheldonberger, for, uh, planning. So, not to get the cart ahead of the horse, would be giving you the go-ahead to start looking for grants and applying for grants to appropriate at this point, and also start getting this together for the planning, and to get ourselves, I don't think, from ground.
Why don't you put that in form of a motion, and then that way, this is okay, you can have power, you have the letter, you can sign it for the planning commission, and make sure everybody's willing to put it on.
And, I make, the only thing we have to make a motion for would be to authorize, John, to go ahead, the planning commission, we can make that.
Well, we can, why don't you incorporate it in the same way, it's, it's, it's more record.
Okay, that's all right, that's fine. Make a motion that, like, so, our council proceed towards updating the comprehensive plan, and to that end, that we authorize, yes, Davidson, to pursue funding grants for a comprehensive plan, and so, I'll make contact with the York County planning commission for more information, and assistance to do that.
Okay. You have a motion, that's a motion, so we'll just add the representative, Pam Sheldonberger, we have that.
Sorry.
We're not going to ask, we're starting to turn to leave that back, but is anybody asked for a second of a motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions on a motion? Revising the board. All those in favor here, consent saying aye?
Aye.
Those? Aye, aye, thank you. Okay. Back to you, solicitor. Okay, recycling ordinance.
Yes.
Once again, that's not something you're, we're.
Well, no, it's probably because, that's not my fault, but I did, I have this here that you're on, I, I may have talked to a couple of you about this, you should have a copy of it. What this is, is mandating that recycling, you can also, you can, you can, you can, you can.
A whole bit again.
Now, this was brought up, maybe a year and a half or so ago. One, one of the reasons that we have to, well, we don't have to, but I have applied for nine-to-two grant to the borough, and the authority, although the borough will be the recipient, for a new compactor and a new recycle truck. I had a meeting with DEP on last Friday for about an hour and a half to go over our, our grant application, and it looks very favorable. There are two ordinances that must be in place before we can submit for, for the nine-to-two grant. One is a mandatory recycling, and the second is a new burning ordinance, which we have in place. To, to preempt the question someone was going to have, I would say now, we probably, I would say ninety percent of the town recycles. What we would do, if this is approved, and certainly, you can only out, two, one, a couple of years ago, there was a borough council member down in Newbury, or something, he'd go around and actually go through people's garbage, you know, and pick up data. Certainly not going to get to that point, but what we will do is have, if this is approved, is to have the driver make note of addresses that do not recycle, and then we will just send up a nice, we explain now why we're doing this, and ask the current operations, we're going to quote that, hopefully, we would not have to take any of that, so.
I represent the municipality that we're saying about.
I know, so, I was hoping, and this is something that, I, I thought I had asked our solicitor to do, not necessarily all, but I spoke to Steve about this, I was hoping that they would advertise this, because we're sort of on with a gun here, but we've already submitted a copy of the ordinance, the nine-to-two grant, but the problem is, I have to notarize if everything is legit, so, I would be in favor of, of this council approving, at least at this point, for advertising for the recycle ordinance, and the deadline for the nine-to-two grant is October sixteenth, at nine o'clock in the morning, so if everything would go well, we could adopt this, send it out October, so it would be official, so. I don't see any, I'd like to get a motion for, and I don't see many questions that I would have, please, make a motion for a plan.
That's what I was going to tell you.
Okay, okay. Is there a second on a motion? Okay, now, any questions on a motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
If I understood you right, on burning, okay, that means there's no burning of trash in the, okay?
Correct, of anything. We use anything. Or you use anything, or you know, open burning allowed, that has nothing to do with this, but that's an ordinance that has been in effect for thirty years, you know, or so.
Now, I do a lot of walking, and I noticed that some people have contained, um, like bonfires.
Well, that's, now, that's a gray area, you're talking about, in other words, it, no, you're talking about somebody might have...
A bonfire at night?
That people are sitting around, yeah, that, well, that would be a gray area. I, and if someone would, would complain to the borough, we would have to investigate it, but I would certainly think that we would be lenient enough not to. In other words, we're, we don't want people to burn trash, we don't want people to burn leaves, anything that, you know, is sending bad things up in the air. Uh, you know, as far as that, that's, like I say, that's a very gray area, so...
Okay, so there wouldn't be a problem with that?
No, not, not, you know, not, unless, unless your neighbor complains to the borough.
Okay.
Okay?
I'd like one, but for Whoville, taking the recycle.
Oh, well, we will, oh, yeah, we will, yeah, we will, we, yeah, we, yeah. Any other questions on this motion? All those in favor of your consent saying aye?
Aye.
Those? Nice, thank you. Make sure, this is really important, this gets, uh, gets, uh, the, uh... Alright, go ahead, anything else? Okay. Mr. have anything else? Anyone else have anything for what? Or is no assistant? I don't understand, uh, Neil, you know, uh, his assistant?
Hi. I, her father has been a client of mine in the past, and, uh, actually, I, her father is a veterinarian in my district.
Oh, okay.
Very nice home, I helped build the home thirty years ago on that...
Are you saying that's why it's a nice home? Because you all... Okay, alright.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much. Neil, with that, your order.
I've got my cup of water here. I'm sorry. Fred Snoser, so I'm gonna go for the next half hour.
This bowl is not a bottle, but...
Um, two thirty-five Bonnie Street, we had an individual, actually a couple come, and asked, uh, for a variance to play trailer, when I failed another turn and placed the existing trailer last month's meeting. And I have in front of me another individual bought that property and is now looking to replace that that is there with a modular home. And Carol, I just got these drawings tonight, and I'm sorting through it, he needs, in order to put this modular home on a lot, two variances. The properties on either side, the one side, he needs a variance from the ten-foot setback to six foot. On the other side, he needs a variance from ten foot to four foot. He has neighbors' permission on either side to do exactly that, with one neighbor requesting, uh, that the property be surveyed prior to them being placed on the property. Um, the only thing that's not on this draw, and that would be important to me, I think, is the setback from the street right of way. That is not on here. Uh, so I think he would be... Did you realize that there's something centered? Okay. Um, as far as the neighbor requesting a survey prior to it being placed on the lot, uh, in that, well, that's the condition of his giving approval for the variance.
Yeah, we can't stipulate that with your issue of billing for it, because it's not, you know, billing for, for the one, but, yeah.
But I think what, you know, raising is, do we actually have permission of that neighbor?
Yeah, I think the neighbor's permission is hinged on this gentleman getting a survey.
No, I think Carol would have to check with the, uh, the property manager to make sure he's the only... I would, I would think, I wouldn't think anyone would buy a property without being surveyed, but, no, no, I would think so. I would, uh, I guess... No, you know, it's never, somebody bought it from one of them, they, yeah, it's not a law or the evidence, yeah, it's not, uh, to meet their score, but...
No.
I think what I would do is, uh, make a motion to approve the two variances, one for six foot, one for four foot. Realizing that the one neighbor on the one side did not get his permission without the survey, so the property owner's gonna have to take care of that prior to that issue.
Is that part of your motion, that he will not accept, I mean, not, will not give the variances unless...
Until that neighbor is satisfied.
Okay. Now, the motion?
Does that mean, is that clear, now, Carol, are you negotiating that?
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second? Questions on the motion? All those in favor of your consent saying aye? Those, yeah, I'd say, leaving with the front setback, normally, either they encourage that, as long as they stay within line of sight with the, with the next properties, you know, that we usually allow.
That'd be appropriate to make, mention that.
Especially if they're not coming out any further than the legal properties, and not exceeding four feet of actual property.
Well, they have to, like, they are having a look into, not one of them.
Just, just...
The neighbor's one, and I just see my nature, thank you, and I'm gonna, which is, has to be fifty-eight back.
Right.
Right. I'm gonna survey, I'll show that.
Right. Okay.
Okay. My, um, my professional friend, Mr. Mummell, at five oh one Cherry Street, has once again called me, and, um, he has complained, several complaints regarding the property that he acquired by QuikClean, um, the street right of way. Um, his problems, once again, he's put the landscaping in, which he told us he was going to put in. The landscaping is not on the Borough Rightway, it's behind the Rightway line on his new property. The problem he is now having is that people park on the Borough Rightway, where the sidewalk, they would go through that, excuse me, familiar with this, I think? They park on that paved area where people should be able to use the sidewalk to go through there. That vexes him and creates great anguish to him. He's still complaining to me that he has people riding three-wheelers and lawn mowers and everything else through to this newly acquired yard and grass and so forth. And, um, to that end, he is asking that how he should gain police enforcement for trespassing on his property. He is asking that we grant him a letter saying that he is not responsible for clearing snow from the paved area of the street that would be sidewalk, if the sidewalk continues through there, because if somebody were to park... Well, as I understand it, from Mr. Mummell, if that individual actually allows another neighbor to park on her side, there's no problem with that. Yeah, she have been, from that side, there's no problem with it, so she seems agreeable to the rest of the neighborhood, but he seems to have issues, so...
Well, the thing is, if you make one, dude, you're gonna...
But I think what we do is send one letter to Mr. Mummell, explaining this is our position, very politely. And we sent the second letter to the neighbor saying, this is our position, and the reason is this, you're gonna get caught up in this. It gives both of them a month to think about it, and both gonna wind up here in October, but...
See, I, I have no objection, the only is, you're gonna, I mean, that's gonna be very, fairly expensive, because I'm sure they have return curbs.
It is.
They're gonna, they're gonna tear it out, and, uh, but, I have no objections, if you want, I mean, let's...
Mr. Kelly has made a, a very good suggestion for your consideration, and that is that we take parking blocks. And where the curb we go, we can have our streets departments go out and place parking blocks, break down a curb line, and pin fast a black cop, it's on our right of way. We can do it, then no one can park there, Mr. Mummell or anybody. We've solved the problem. No, it's not, it's not gonna be necessary.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, you know, it's important.
Each time your child is up, yeah. That's gonna be... Well, yeah. We cut the curbs up there and estimate it for them, if you need, even if it's sidewalk.
We cut the curbs up there and estimate it for them, if you need, even if it's sidewalk. And it was a town, and doing that, however, it would not, uh, it would not bring the same sidewalk way. Um, however, that, I think, it would...
Yeah, the thing is, if you don't, if you don't put the sidewalk, then people are gonna...
That's what you were saying here.
To me.
You were saying we helped to the point of excavating the curbs, but you still need to put it in the same.
You're just putting a new curb.
Okay, but it still needs to put the sidewalk.
You want to put a curb and sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either, but, and actually, definitely, I have to side walk, too, that's a old curb. It is old curb, again, of course, but, that's what I'm saying, they just go up for a long, but, but, yeah.
That wasn't, I, I, I understood what you understood, and that too, it wasn't saying, um, just put sidewalk, you know, it was like, well, that's, that's what requires the activity.
I said we're doing something, so...
Yeah. I have, I don't have a problem with that, but either... Any other kind of problem with doing it that way?
Just talk to him about it, I don't think you need to put it in that way.
Yes.
I mean, the curbs we deal with, you try to solve the condition, and, uh, people get parked on the side of the sidewalk, so...
Well, that's, that's, that's what people know, but, alright, he has not...
What aggravation? Right, the curb and sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, is that a, is that a general consensus? Does everybody agree to that? I don't think we need a motion to that, because you're just, you're gonna inform him what we're willing to do to help the situation, and then of course, we're gonna talk the other day, too.
Um, I'd like to, I'd like to say, Mr. Mummell is looking for somebody to, like, says lawyer and so forth, uh, pull help here. That's what I was thinking about, we're gonna write and possibly fax it, but to Mr. Kelly for his review before I send it off, what do you think?
Sure.
Should I write it?
I'm picking up from what he's saying.
I don't care, I don't know what I'm gonna begin it, dude.
I mean, me, I thought, first of all, on my part, is this a council decision?
Well, I haven't personally, you know, talked to someone one-on-one, but if you feel that there's another element here that you're concerned about as far as the legal, and then I'm, then I would send a letter.
I think that's, it's really your choice, I, I think, whatever makes you feel about it.
Right, I mean, you're the ones dealing with this, so...
And, and the advantage of putting something in writing is that you've done this understanding of it.
Well, that's alright.
And I agree.
That's getting very polite.
Because he has already had to end up with our, with our police, and he has taken the angle of sticking his attorney coupon them, and, and it was all verbal, and it was, it just went out well, so...
Okay.
Okay. Why don't you give me a summary as the chairman of the, uh, I'll put...
Right. It would simply be as a representative of the entire council, and I, I would fax that to you before it goes out.
That's fine.
Um, if, Carol, if you could find out who that neighbor is on the other side of that property for me, and really, that name and address as well. Um, I did, Fred Snoser, um, has been having, losing sleep, I, it's not that I think he does my thing, but, um, the intersection of, of Full Springs Road and Helen Street causes Fred to lose sleep up there. And to that angle, the, the reason is, he envisions, uh, a bad accident up there, primarily involving a school bus and a tractor trailer flying through that intersection, and a few flying through that intersection at certain times for that. Yeah, um, and he, he has been, he, several times the last, once, he has mentioned to me about, um, putting in for a traffic study of that intersection. And to that end, you should all have received a letter of the Republican planning commission requesting a traffic study. Um, it has brought my attention, that was done five years ago, a similar request, but we'll see what comes of all of that, and, uh, take it from there, we'll see what...
That's, well, I, I agree, but, again, the end result was down to this, please...
Yeah, well, yeah, I do.
Okay.
So, and that's fine, I don't know, I think I should mention too, that, um, and I'll get to this real shortly, um, I had a lot of meetings in Helen Township this last month, and, uh, I sent a copy of that letter to Helen Township. And the next, a couple of days later, I wound up at Helen Township, and they're on top of that, and they're, they're pushing it very hard on, already, and they have a couple of suggestions that have already proceeded, or, or, are going along with that letter to the planning commission, so they hop right on board with that. Um, Sue Rabel and Chad Wilesberger, we appointed them to the emergency management coordinator, emergency emergency management coordinator last month, and they, uh, are hard at work and updating paperwork and putting it in for the process, so that's ongoing. Um, I mentioned that I had numerous meetings with Helen Township, last two months meeting, uh, I was being pushed a little bit of product to have a meeting with Helen Township. Didn't quite know what I was supposed to have a meeting with Helen Township about, however, uh, my recommendation of our new solicitor, Mr. Kelly, uh, I requested some information from Helen Township, uh, and then did some math work with it. And the information I got from Helen Township was, and requested from the township was, of the number of hours that they spent in the three municipalities that they covered. They cover Helen Borough, they cover Riceville Borough, and they cover Helen Township. Uh, what I requested were the hours that they spent in the individual three municipalities, both in two thousand and five as well as two thousand and six, year to date. Then I also requested, um, their budget information, um, the police department, uh, their total two thousand and five police budget for two thousand and six, proposed budget, as well as their year-to-date two thousand and six expenditures. Uh, with that information, um, I did some math, but let me back up, um, just bear with me, I'll throw some numbers out here. In two thousand and five, for the full year of two thousand and five, Helen Borough received one thousand seven hundred and sixty hours of policing. Riceville Borough received two thousand three hundred and ninety-five hours of policing. Helen Township received fifteen thousand seven hundred and four hours of policing. Now, there's, there's all kinds of things that go into play, that Helen Township has roughly six thousand residents versus our roughly twenty-five hundred, twenty-four hundred. Helen Borough is roughly about the same. Big differences, though, miles covered and in the township are much greater than in the Borough, and other factors take place. Uh, but without all of that, um, so you know, year-to-date, two thousand and six, the numbers follow right along the line with two thousand and five, when you do the math. Uh, what I then did, uh, was I broke down the totals and, and came up with the percentages of time spent. Helen Borough received nine percent of their total hours, ten hours spent. Riceville received twelve percent of their total hours spent. Helen Township received seventy-nine percent of their total hours spent. I then went to their budget figures, and I started backing out the percentages of their budget that were attributed to the different municipalities. What I came up with is Riceville Borough, their twelve percent, our twelve percent amounted to basically a hundred thousand dollars of police protection that we received. It's important to note that in two thousand and five, Riceville Borough paid, uh, I believe it was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So, all of a sudden, I had, okay, now I have reason to have a meeting here with, with Helen Township. Before I did that, I, I checked with Mr. Kelly, Mr. Hovis, I also checked with some avenues I have down the Southern Regional Police Force. And I'm on the right track, and I'm parking up the wrong tree here, and everybody came back and said, you have something to talk about here. Uh, so, I, I called the township manager, and also, before all this, I, I had the opportunity to sit down with Mike Martin, uh, a time or two, uh, informally, and, and talk a little bit, too. So I, I scheduled a meeting with Mike Martin and Jim Ball. Um, went through a meeting with those two individuals, uh, and hey, this is interesting, too. Um, we, every month we get a police report, just like we did this month. Um, I did not have a police report for February of this year, so Carol tracks one up to me. It was interesting to notice, the bottom of that police report was this paragraph. There was a surplus in our end-of-the-year budget for two thousand and five, and as a result, the board supervisors graciously approved spending some of the surplus on some upgrades. He worded the some of the surplus. A new telephone system or voice map, a new computer-to-email system, a new computer software program for police reports and records. This software program will allow us to share information with every other police department that's running your parent. The cost of this program alone, and realize this is only some of the surplus budget, the cost of this program alone was approximately ten thousand dollars. It's a valid program, it's, it's helpful to all municipalities, there's no question on the money, but, you know, the expenditure would be valid, but it goes to the point that it validates there was a, a large surplus there. Which, I scheduled a meeting with Jim Ball and Mike Martin, went into the meeting, and the first thing I discussed with them, I revised my percentages of coverage for Riceville Borough. Um, two months ago, I reported that the numbers that I was coming up with was that Helen Township Police took roughly twenty-six percent of any given time period in Riceville Borough. And when I crunched the new numbers, and these are numbers from Jim Ball, township manager, directly from Blaine Quinkle, as chief of police, as I crunched the numbers once again, in two thousand and five, they were here only twenty-five, twenty-seven percent... As I crunched the numbers once again, in two thousand and five, they were here only twenty-five, twenty-seven percent of the time. In two thousand and six, year-to-date, they were only here twenty-five percent of the time. Once again, average two years, twenty-six percent. So, that was where I started with Jim Ball and Mike Martin. I said, well, how do you feel about this? And they're like, yeah, I kind of realized, and we talked about a few things. They didn't quite know where I was going, so I pulled out all my percentages, I just went over with you. And very quickly, I had a piece of paper coming from the other side of the paper from Jim Ball, and they'd already done the math too. And their numbers agreed one hundred percent to my numbers. And they said, you know what? We have been doing justice here. So, that's, that's where, uh, that kind of stands. Um, and then we had a couple more meetings and talked some more, um, about how they were going to approach this. Now, the initial meeting where I confronted them with those numbers, and it was a cordial meeting, confrontation, that, that wasn't the way it went. Um, initially, when I brought this to their attention, they acknowledged that, yeah, there is disparity here. We understand how this raises questions and issues. Um, by the time I got to the next meeting, it was nuanced a little bit. And that, I think, came from them talking to their solicitor. And the nuancing came around to the point that, uh, well, I know our contract says this, and there is never the intention of the contract to provide policing on related to these numbers and this system of figuring things out. So, you know, they're starting to move the wagons by the second meeting. I understand that, that's, that's fine. Um, but, all that to say this, and you had in front of you a letter that, um, is the result of the township supervisors meeting last Thursday night. Uh, I talked with Jim Ball, uh, Friday morning, Friday afternoon, and he informed me as to what that letter was going to say. The letter was actually finalized and drafted today. Um, I was not home all day today, uh, to receive emails unfortunately. So, the letter being, uh, due to make via Sergeant Sowers. That is what, um, Helms Township, uh,'s response is. And here again, I think that goes through the filter of their solicitor. Uh, and it certainly does. Uh, but there is a good deal of interest there on their part in, uh, coming closer to meeting the benchmarks that have been submitted to them. Now, all of that to say this, I, I, this all gives me a much clearer handle on what has happened up to this point. And as I see here, three primary problems that we have here, and I'm just going to get them real briefly and over the top. Number one, I think our agreement with Helms Township, it's the same agreement, by the way, that Helen Borough has with Helms Township, is absolute garbage. No one in their right mind should have signed that thing. It, it assures us nothing. It's, it's just, and Helen Borough has acknowledged that. The mayor and I talked about this in Helen Borough. He said, I, you know, he has, this is not a document that we really can even sign. Um, and, and the problem with that contract is, it assures us nothing and guarantees the township everything. It's, it is, it's not anything anybody should ever assign. I don't know what happened. The other problem is, I think what may have happened here is that agreement was signed and immediately, no oversight was given. This is the first time in three years of this arrangement, evidently, that anybody's looked at these numbers in this fashion. And it probably should have been done much sooner and all along. So, you know, it validates that we have residents complaining that we're not seeing enough protection. Are we getting what we're paying for? What's going on here? All those complaints are validated, but yet we have no way of enforcing it by our agreement, as it, as it presently exists. Um, and the other problem we have is, we have a bad, bad problem with public relations, and that which is primarily around the chief. Of the three problems, I can deal with two. I don't know how I'm going to deal with, honestly don't, the township doesn't. But, the township is more than willing to work through, um, our numbers and see what they can do to address further needs here in the borough. Uh, to get us closer to an equitable arrangement. Uh, they're more than willing to sit down and come up with a contract for the three municipalities that would work better. Um, and they're completely perplexed about how to handle our, our problem with, with, uh, personnel, personnel, our, our public relations problem. Uh, what's that? Uh, well, okay. And Helen, I'll just, I'll say this, Helms Township is, they had a problem years ago, and as they feel it, the problem no longer exists, and they attribute that to the chief. However, they are now confronted, I think, with, with some people on the other side that are telling them some other things, that things aren't working out. And, and I think the questions are raised, they, they don't understand it, they realize and don't deny that it is a real problem. So, they're, they're, they're confused, but yet they're listening and they're, they're trying to understand how to fix it. And we, we can't come up with anything at this point to fix it, but I, I would agree to sitting down with them and continuing to try to fix it. And they're in agreement with that too. Um, Helms Township, Mike Martin as representative supervisors, Jim Ball, uh, the three, the three of us have been able to talk at length about this and get somewhere. If this council would want us to go further and get further with it, I would be willing to put that effort forward. They would be willing to contribute toward it as well. All that means, we would be rewriting the contract agreement, we would be trying to work our numbers into a more equitable arrangement. And when we look at a more equitable arrangement, let me point out something that's pointed out to me by Southern Regional. They pointed out that our arrangement is not necessarily bad. If we wound up in a situation like they have twice in the last several years, where they had, uh, one was the runaway dump truck down in, what borough was it? That, uh, caused them hours and hours and hours of police time. They also had another situation as a murder. I forget which one that, it might have been the one where the guy was drunk and shot his buddy. It might have been that one. Once again, that caused one of their municipalities a huge amount of police time. If that happened in Riceville Borough under this present arrangement, you need to understand, you're sitting pretty. You're, you're paying a hundred, whatever, and they've got to do it. And so, you know, in that, in that situation, you're, you're sitting good. So, there, there are kind of things too, you have to realize, and it works the other way, so.
Well, not necessarily, let me, let me start on you by that, because where I've negotiated this is, um, you don't use it on a, on a pay-as-you-go. You, you take what their averages did over a period of time, say three years or something like that, and say, okay, looking back or, or looking at our experience here, this is the average, we've done a nice job, you know, establishing what that average has been. And you say that's a compensation basis. And then, over a period of years, if there's a change, for example, although you may have a, a single incident that would make a change, more than likely, the change would come in the form of Helms Township as it grows. Because it's got more rural area and so forth, and as it grows in terms of needs for police calls and so forth, this percentage will increase. Um, the police force may increase too, but its percentage will always increase, so you're, you're not going to be upset. So, I think you look at it and you try to level out some of those blocks by, you know, averaging.
And, and the thing I like about the topic, if, if, if we've been trying to, um, talk our way through this, one of the things that I'd like is having Mr. Kelly on my side. Because that's the kind of thing that I need help with, and he can provide too. And I think, you know, if we're going to continue forward, we'd, we'd be able to work something out. The other thing I, I, I need to let you know this, um, the commitment from the township, I, I feel, they, they are willing, more than willing to work with Riceville Borough. It is, um, and, like, I've had numerous meetings with the township. There are things about Riceville Borough that they do not understand, they're willing to listen. I think there are things about Helms Township they do not understand, but I, I really frankly think that there is benefit to continue and talk about this, so.
Roger, again, uh, I just, I guess took your copy of the letter in and took a quick glance at it. One of the things that, um, that appeared to me is that, one of the things that Eric's been doing is increasing the level of service to the borough. Uh, but, one of the things that you want me to do is ascertain whether you need an increase in the level of service, and is that how much? And that's where, I think I told you about the DCPD that, uh, guidelines, uh, in terms of, uh, the ratio of call time to the call time. So, you'll want to make sure that that aligns when you do your community.
Alright, well, go ahead, Eric.
Our, our problem is, as I've seen it, is we generate so many calls, whether it's the demographics of the town or what. We're always twenty-three or twenty-four percent of our total calls. For a relatively small population, and that doesn't plug in well with additional security. It's just, okay, most of the calls.
Where did you get that, those figures, uh?
That's, we're always high calls. High percentage related to the total, uh, population or area.
The total population of?
Two, three municipalities.
And what are you basing?
We are twenty-five, we are in twenty-four percent of their total. Definitely twenty-four percent of the calls.
But where are you basing that on? What information are you basing that on?
Just numbers out there, we were this last month, from what John said, here.
Of their total, total calls.
Which is, which is high for, for a small population.
Right. I also think there are things that this borough council can do, other than changing the leasing arrangements to improve this town. And we have, we have a high percentage of rental properties in this town. And numerous, a high percentage of those rental properties are not in good condition. They attract a certain degree of tenant. That is something that we have to help here to work on and, and, and do something about, and I think we should. And, you know, there, there are other components to this whole, whole problem here. If you, if you're having problems with law enforcement in town, you've got to take responsibility. We have to take responsibility for our part of that. And if this town is lax on regulation in other areas, you're going to have to put up with a certain kind of citizenry. So, I, I don't think it's appropriate to, and I'm not saying anybody's doing this, it's not appropriate to throw the burden of pinning up problem individuals on the police department. Some of that burden rests right here.
Yeah, wait, now, I mean, they don't enforce any of that.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I think, I think we can, I think we can, uh, influence the quality of our rental properties.
Oh, yeah, no.
And, and those tenants that occupy somewhere before the police ever have to deal with all these dangers. I think it's wackener, so hopefully.
That's really, that's really something. Let me, let me just say, this is a critical decision here, okay? If you notice, at the bottom of the agenda, I've already said, and I don't have to, uh, recess speech for next week, excuse me, just to strictly talk about police coverage. Whether it be the contract or the information that, that Mayor Amber has worked on, uh, financial status, that it does financial information, and create an office department. And I think it's certainly something we can do tonight and discuss, you know, whether it's council's decision, whether they want to move forward with another meeting. My main concern is this, that this certainly is an easy out for Helms Township in this letter where they said, to eliminate this disparity and show a more visible police presence in the borough. I mean, what about the last three years? You know, are they going to reimburse us for the time that they charged us for that they didn't spend here? How are we still going to be guaranteed that we're going to be getting what we're paying for? And we talked about. And I, you know, my personal feeling is that unless you can trust the people you're dealing with, you know, I certainly would never be in favor of, you know, extending the contract or reviewing everything. At least until I hear what our other options are. You know, that's, that's my personal feeling. So, you know, if we can sit here, you know, and discuss it another hour, I personally feel that it's a very serious situation. We keep talking about saving the taxpayers money, and as far as I'm concerned, this is one of the biggest areas where I feel we can save the taxpayers money if it's done right. And we can give them a better service. Again, I'm just talking off the top of my head without seeing the figures, but I personally feel that the least, as a council, going to the mayor, can take time to sit down, think this over for a week or so, and then sit down and try to make the best decision that we can, which is in the best benefit for the people that we represent.
If we need to hammer it, we can do that, we should do that.
That's what I'd like to do, and that's what I'm recommending. I just would hope that everybody would be agreeing and be willing to sit here for a couple of hours and discuss this. I think, I think we owe it to the mayor, he's spent a couple of the time researching this, um, and I just think we need to look at all avenues before we make a decision.
I don't want to come down as saying I'm dogmatic one way or the other.
Yeah, I don't want to now, I made, I made already one of the impressions now, but.
A very appropriate suggestion was made to me by council president a couple of months ago. We need to look at all options for the bank that are, and I'm still appreciative of that.
Yeah, right, and that's what we're, that's what I think we should do. I'm hoping any other comments.
I mean, we'll be held given.
Yes. Everybody in the room? Okay, alright, can you, seriously, I, I told you to sit on there, I really appreciate, uh, you're right, this shouldn't have been done before, we're not going to burn bridges, so we're, we're moving on. But, uh, you certainly have enlightened us, and I think you probably got the attention of some at Helms Township. But I appreciate it, thank you. Anything else, Ian?
No, if you throw me out of Riceville, however, with this issue, I think Helen Borough will gladly accept me. You know, I just got to say thanks for the presentation, and they weren't even going to compensate.
You just don't want, you don't want to put a button with it, right?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's, uh, let's go to the person now, I'm going to let Sharon step in here. I've got a couple of things I want to do, if you don't mind, Sharon.
Okay, um. Carol, well, Keith had a question a while back about, uh, getting some software. I'm not sure if the same software that Carol had in mind, but maybe you and I had a meeting with Carol and learned to use the software. And I think that, um. You can hear that? Okay. Um, Carol, it should be called where that is compatible with software that the authority is now, so I recommend that we purchase it, um, it was one on Amazon.com for a hundred and twenty-four ninety-nine with free shipping, I don't know if we do better if we went to Office Max, which they don't want to places, um, so. It says with super saver shipping, I don't want that, it's free super saver shipping, so, um, just, you know, I do the motion that we need to do that because it's for Carol, and there's a lot of things that Carol can learn to do with it, and we can maybe eliminate some of our...
Okay, so, second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, questions on the motion? Now, this, we can be trying to streamline the thing, the bills, the things, uh, which is what we're actually working for, you know, if not, we can get into a mix of it. Any other questions on the motion? What was the very beginning of the test thing on? Uh, those, and I said, thank you.
Okay, and then also on hiring a part-time employee, uh, I got a job list from Carol Lord in one of them, and I just revised it, I don't know if anybody, I made it to, I made it a general clerk rather than an administrative assistant or whatever, so it's just like a kind of general duty, so if anyone wants to review it.
Yeah, that's fine, if you, if you approve it and then, uh, just make sure that I haven't said that the authority can do it since we're suspended, and so we would suck the charges out.
Okay, um, uh, it's, I guess, did the authority already first this?
No, no, they know about it, but they won't refer it to their next authority.
Okay, and we, um, I guess I need to make a motion?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay, I need to make a motion to hire Brian Ramler and eleven dollars an hour to split with the municipal authority? And we need to establish a number of hours to run it?
Yes, and that, certainly, at part-time, that, I don't know, there's a, how many hours?
Twenty.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Okay, there you go. Okay? And you put it on the form of motion?
Yes.
There's a second to that. Okay, just a little question on that motion, I just wanted to, to let you know that, uh, that Brian has been, even though he has been hired, it was with the understanding that he has to have approval to go to council, to the authorities, but we needed to, to help him out. Uh, Brian's very good with computers, uh, you all should have a picture or copy of a potential website for the borough, that he's already working on. Another one of his duties will be to produce the newsletter, which, by the way, was done outside, over the years, and we even spend at least fifteen, seven, two hundred dollars each time we had to do this print, and we will be doing those all in-house, so we'll be saving money for that, too. Just wanted to let you know that. Any other questions on the motion? What was the very beginning of the test thing on? Uh, those, and I said, thank you.
I'll email it to you.
Yeah, if anybody had a question, our phones were down today, nobody could call in, it was a terrible mess, I don't think they got it fixed.
Uh, not yet.
That's changed, because they, they should give, they should give them a better service than that, or, or business like that, you know, or in this town. Okay, Sharon, you have anything else? Are you doing any, trying to get any quotes on insurance or anything?
Yes, I have, um, I've gotten quite a few, well, I've gotten a couple of quotes back from, um, actually, I'm pretty agey that we're using now for the health insurance.
Oh, okay.
And, um, actually, what the representative and I came up with, she gave me a couple different companies from what we have right now, is what I recommend that we stay with, or health insurance anyways, um...
And you're looking at all property insurance, okay, great, good, alright, thank you very much.
Yep.
Uh, streets, no?
The alley near here that gets down to Robbins and Phil Harris, I guess that's, is that the one right there?
Yeah, that's fine, that's probably why that, uh, Phil Harris, obviously, the name, and so is Happy, and everybody knows. The word running towards those, it was, uh, it's, uh, Spartan Avenue, that's where it's powered and, uh...
Also, all across walks, because all that lines with, with me and him, do they need that? Can you see them back there with the...
No, they actually don't, of course.
And leaves, are we going to have, like, regular days for certain areas?
I don't know if you people decide.
Somebody asked me, I can't just have, like, a certain day to go come by my house, I think I'm going to leave town, so they don't go down the street.
Yeah, I want you to sit down with guys and go over a plan, you know.
Then you have a range.
But I know that, uh...
I know a big problem last year was, we'd have everybody would do their leaves over the weekend, like, Saturday night, and nobody would come around Monday, Tuesday, they would come around to, like, Winckie and then all your leaves go.
Right. I would just, yes, definitely, if the boys sleep well, because we, we're not flexible enough, it's my thing, because...
Well, we definitely have to concentrate, I, I think you're right, Sharon, the first of the week is, is the most, I mean, letting a lot of...
Everybody, everybody does it on the weekend, I mean, Terry, from Sunday, you go around town, you see everybody, all of you are out on the weekend, so it's not a problem.
You're going to have to, most, either go home down there and set up a time, you know, because sometimes the leaves will start forming, you know, that's the most, yeah, that's the most telling people start bringing their leaves out, you almost have to start then, you know what I mean? But they should be getting a lot of equipment down there, so.
You need to pay them for the weekend, too.
Oh, yeah, right, right, so, we'll, uh, yeah, we'll get some noticed out, that, you know, we want to still build something, that, money aside, so.
Just look at, man, township does accept single axle loads of beans at the campus, like, for nine dollars a load, and that's a big single axle.
A load?
A load.
Oh, no, we pay ten dollars a ton. Down Charles Town Road, it's a little further to go. Let me, well, we'll have to go in, let me go in.
There was a window of opportunity, I don't know if the window of opportunity is still open or not, but they, they, a lot, so much space for you to, for you to...
Right.
There's several loads being added every year.
There's fifty-six, I mean, there's fifty-six, at least, I mean, the middle of that, you know. Do you have a contact, uh, person, could you see that?
Yeah, our merits in manor township.
Can you take him down there and then pick your own?
That would be something you need to be aware of, too, is we won't take a leave there, if that offends Columbia, then we're not taking a leave.
Oh, okay, awful, I don't know about that. Because we, to be honest with you, we took, you know, the only leaves we took over there last year was the ones from Ann Arbor.
And I'm going to ask you, is, like, this high stick, just coming up, it's close to, like, um, it's mainly throughout the, because during the alley, does he have a house or a, 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 a,[1173.12]
Yeah, that's for the, to get, as John suggested, to get the, to get the water off the parking lot.
Right, yeah, where's the toll?
Well, I'm, um, I have a couple parents, um, my governor, Steve knows about this one. Uh, I think we're concerned with this intersection out here, Chestnut Street, and it's crossing into school. I mean, they're even wanting to return lots of our office news. Uh, and they were requesting that they can have an adult down here rather than a kid crossing guard. I mean, that is pretty.
To look into, yes. Yeah, I know what you're saying, I don't know how many kids come up that way, but, uh.
Well, you know, the school district are intent on this, is changing the traffic pattern. Starting next week, the letter is out on, no, this week, I'm sorry, the letter is out on Wednesday. It's going to change the traffic pattern from going up, uh, to Third Street going in. They want now the parents to come up Second Street, go up Chestnut Street to the school to alleviate problems out on four sixty-two, and backups on Third. So, they're sending them, so it's going to just truly add to the traffic situation.
Uh, okay, all right, we'll, we'll. Yeah, okay. Well, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I'm there.
Uh, Leo, I don't know, yeah, okay, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I had intended to be, uh, walk through for the punch list on North Third. And I guess John has things about in check here. Best one I know, PJ involved, or, or that.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't there.
I was the only one that there because.
No, I wasn't there, it, I was there, because the day was, right, the day was Monday, because Mel was supposed to be here, and then he gave us the wrong day, I wasn't there either. So evidently you were.
Yeah, I was there.
Right.
We got all the residents out.
Okay, that's good.
The punch list was established, but I don't know if it works still.
I don't know.
I don't know, we're.
Do you have, I mean, anything that, I just could not, I could not get the contractor back to that concrete, and I looked like it's mad, but I had a street report to do. I have a secretary that got calling, uh, they said, he said that they were supposed to do it. PJ says, was in the mood, that PJ's going to take care of it, just got the secretary done, so. The guys did, and I think they did an excellent job, so.
I didn't want to waste time for a while.
If you don't mind, get, get that all, get that back in, yeah.
All right, I did let Bud know that one dead tree up in North Third Street's still under warranty, so they're taking that out, and, uh, getting that information.
So, you did give it to him?
Yes.
Did we get this from?
Yeah, he already.
Oh, okay, great.
And I did, did talk to him, wanted to change in the super page, and the minimum that you have against, uh, the whole we have, just to do that.
Okay.
So, uh, Bud was going to check if it's available, something larger would just be available for the state contract, and also try to establish a trade-in document for the one we have. It isn't, we can ship.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Mayor.
Okay, on recreation, um, the school district has requested that.
Oh, my.
The school district has requested that we place, uh, signs up on Memorial, Old Memorial Field, um, regarding trust gassing and such. They had, had the signs produced, um, and we are going to then go ahead and put them up. They simply will protect us from trust gassers and give us the right to actually, uh, trust people under arrest for trust gassing, uh, at various times. Uh, so that's part of recreation. Um, as far as the mayor's category of policing, I guess, John, because I'll state my comments to September eighteenth, if you step moving.
I appreciate it.
Share then, for the sake of time. Um, also, as far as property updates, I do have, uh, you should have a two-page sheet with all the various properties, uh, that either come into the office, call the domain in the office, or, uh, US council persons have, uh, given us as far as things you wanted us to check out. These are the things that Carol and I go around weekly and we check out. There's two pages up in there, you can see what we've been doing, where they are, what they're about, and what the results were. Um, there are several that have the results after checking, uh, by notice that we mailed, it's mailed out, uh, and they're sent to Justice for Peace, and he handles them. And that's where they go to the mayor, they're called Justice, Justice Gasser's office. Um, so, there's where we are.
Okay, let her do it.
Is there anything for the, with the fence ordinance around that corner, remember Minions, uh?
Yes, the temporary, yes. There's a temporary fence around here, I, you should have a second sign.
You have to have a better fence, I mean, that's for.
Well, that's a, well, that's a construction, that's a construction fence.
No fence, it looks like to me.
Well, so that's a construction fence. Carol, you, you may, uh, want to contact them with a letter from you and the mayor, and tell them that, you know, they've got to get their permanent fence up, this is the property, they need to put the snow in the wind, and pick back on the voluntary, and so, we need to.
There's no words, and I don't know what that's supposed to mean, Paul. I don't think, um.
No, that's, I mean, you may have read something in the paper, it's supposed to be something for the state wall, but, I mean, she is, she essentially is going to put a fence up. Just put the fence up.
Yeah, right, so it's, it's part of the permit that she got.
Very good, okay. Yeah, actually, it's a requirement. What's in the uniform?
It doesn't run down on the board, it doesn't have, that's something about it. That's not happening.
Grease, I think it was.
I want to thank Mr. finance as well for, um, taking a look at various properties for us and, and giving us, you know, uh, their opinions. And what we've been doing is, uh, taking them, notifying the residents regarding the situation at the same time as passing out to, uh, code administrators, uh, to handle the code violations regarding the properties, what is, um, that is one of the ways, um, a lot of various things have been cleaned up, as such as, um, the house right down here at the bridge, um, that, that gentleman is really wanting to work with us, um, and he's really sincere in taking full responsibility. There are those, however, who do not want to work with us and do not take any responsibility.
Right.
Um, that's the sad, those are the sad ones, um, and then things resolve, such as happened down, um, on French Street, at the production is still, it's still closed, um, and will be public for quite a while.
All right, so.
Well, I can save the time, because everything that I would talk about, you saw.
Oh. Well, maybe we sold it.
You know, so, I'll save the time.
That's fine.
Very quiet? And I, very quiet.
Oh, good. All right.
I haven't announced it yet, very close, and I'm just shocking when I saw it there, but I guess.
Yeah, uh. What we're going to do, I have done in the past, is notice the council persons, help the volunteer that wives and, and secretaries of, and authority people. Uh, for two hours, and it's very, it's, you know, you can get through a lot of people. Last year, we, I thought we have some more people, but they were politics at that time, so maybe they'll help this year.
I'll try to show up.
Okay, but anyhow, you have the list, uh, it's your responsibility to get it filled out.
Okay.
How many calls are there? Well, it's nice to have, it's nice to have three or four, but you can get away with two. And if you can't, if you can't get them, then call the girl in the chamber. She may send some people over, it's nice if we can cover her in the end of the bridge. Okay, yeah, the fact of the money is what you're doing again, all right?
Can you complain?
Yeah, oh, yeah, you're right, okay? Anything else more? No, okay? All right, the only, the only one thing I have, and, and again, this is a little pre-serve, you should all have a copy, there's been some rumbling and rumblings about the uniform destruction code people, and they don't need a contract for you to look at. Uh, contract with the, uh, uniform destruction code people, and you have it out in June of those seven. Just keep that in the back of your mind. Uh, as far as the new office, uh, don't want to abruptly be in there next month. Uh, things are not going, like I would like them to go, but there is no doubt about it, it is going to be very, very nice when it's done, but it just seems that Carol will haul out, they find something else wrong, and they have to do this and that, but, uh, I would say that, uh, if we do the rear mirror, I think we'll have our October meeting here in schedule. Because it's, it's in a sense, rushing it now.
Okay.
So, we're planning on being in there by November, how's that sound? Okay? You know, we get all the equipment glued down there, everything's set up, and I don't want to have a council meeting down here without having the office, you know, opened up, so. And we will, at some point in time, have an open house, uh, and, uh, all those stupid things, so. All right? Uh, if, uh, if no one has any objections, I would ask, and again, this is going to be a recess, regular recess meeting, and we will be, and will be in a position to, or can, make decisions. It will be a regular, it's not, this is not a workshop, this is not an executive session, it's a meeting to discuss police protection. So, with that, I would ask for the adjournment to recess meeting until September eighteenth, that sounds to you?
Don't get the word thrown.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I'm sorry.
I have one question, what do we do? Down on First Street there, I think we've gone and found a front.
Mm-hmm.
There must have been a tree there at one time, right after the headcount, and then there's a, I guess, a house.
Oh, yeah, it all grew up with.
Yeah, who is responsible for that?
Play, all right. So, I mean, if you want the guys to hit it with a weed marker, it may take you a few minutes, but it's their responsibility, property.
Do it.
No, it's good. I'll say something to Steve, or you two.
It's definitely.
Yeah.
Fight us, and get them all up there.
All right, okay. Um, notice we're to recess. So, second. See you next Monday. Thank you. Appreciate your help, everybody.